We do need, this is gonna be a recurrence.
Absolutely.
That's gonna happen, so we need to get an understanding between the union and city to say this is where it stands because we have two conflicting.
And the only way it's gonna happen is gonna be to allow them to file a grievance.
But at the same token, if the city council adopts the current federal rates, this conversation is over.
But we haven't yet.
But that's what I'm saying, though. We have a policy manual that has not been updated since 2025 to reflect the rates. If the policy manual stated that meal reimbursement will be based on the federal requirement for meal reimbursement, none of us is having this conversation.
This could've come up a year ago, Chief. Could've come up two years ago.
Yeah, we have actually brought this up a couple different times to state that it should come out of the federal numbers because that's, if they're traveling to Chicago or if they're traveling to Sicum, there's gonna be two different rates. Or if you're going to San Diego, that would be another one. So, once again, that's, we're kinda spinning our wheels, we're going down a rabbit hole. I would suggest that we can make a decision here to pay the up to and not go over, right?
Thank you.
And then figure out where we go from there, or we can choose to table it once again and get some sort of an understanding from the union.
I wanna keep the money from them. And like I said-
Yeah, I don't either.
Last time, I was happy to pay them the amount that they, what the majority of the council felt they should be getting. Your view's gonna be in violation of the contract. Mine's gonna be it's what it's supposed to be. And again, give them the money that they're owed, and if they wanna file a grievance, they can file a grievance. Or if, wanna come to some sort of an understanding or whatever, you've got their ear, you're talking with them. So, if they wanna do that, that's fine.
Their position is, that's what their contract states. The position of the federal government is our rates should be higher, which then make it a moot point. Fred, I appreciate your offer, and that's one of the things, too. If the city council's not going to approve the difference, please let me know, so I can then make up the difference to my officers. And each time that they file for over, I'll make sure that they are adequately paid, so that way the city does not face a grievance from them.
Do we have a breakdown as to what the difference really is?
On two, I'm sorry, on two of them we do.
Okay.
Well, Brian's, Foss Knott's last one should be $25 and some odd cents. It's on the sheet.
Okay, so Brian's is 2545?
Yes.
And then we're $12 and 31 cents for Jeremy? I mean, the thing is, you can't even go to McDonald's for breakfast for $10 these days, you know? If you're not getting the one burrito, so. So, 1938. That's for Eric. So, 1938 plus 12.31 plus 2545. We're gonna have 5714 total. So, let's back that 5714 out of it, and I will write three checks to these individuals to cover that. But in the meantime, Chief, I would like to see if you could contact the two collective bargain agreement.
They've been spoken to.
So, if they could give their interpretation of it.
Their interpretation is exactly what I'm saying.
And I understand that, but if it's in writing, then we can get it to the mayor and get it to Jeff and get it to the attorney to come to a consensus of which way we're gonna head.
Okay, so it's 57 how much?
14.
5714.
14, okay. I'll make sure that the officers are reimbursed for that amount by myself.
I'll take care of it, Chief.
No, I got it.
So-
I give paid for this as a donation, so.
So, does that bring us to $209,420.85?
Let's see here.
My calculations are correct?
20942085?
Yes.
All I was gonna say, and I'm fine with that, I was gonna say, this could've been taken care of three months ago when it first came up.
Can you elaborate how it could've been taken care of?
Well, we just passed a budget, and one of the things that we would normally do the same time we pass a budget would be as if there's changes to the personnel ordinance. There weren't any changes to the personnel ordinance, but there could've been something proposed to be changed to the personnel ordinance, correct? Whether it be us, or you, or anybody else, right, the federal rate?
The personnel manual, but their contract still states that they're allowed $45 a day.
No, I understand that.
And I would feel that if you felt that that was the case, that maybe three months ago, you could've brought that up to change the personnel manual.
I just said that, didn't I?
You just said it now, but three months ago.
Three months ago, I wasn't concerned. I didn't know that the federal thing three months ago. That only came up just after the multiple times that we've been bringing this to your attention over the last couple of months.
That's not true. I've had other conversations with former Alderwoman Johnson about these two. I've given her, I gave her the federal rates many months ago, too.
Yeah, I think this one slipped through the cracks, as we're gonna do the budget, then we're gonna do a employee policy manual next, so.
Just pointing out, it hasn't been shared with me, so.
So, just so we're clear right now, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear that the city council's direction is that you're going to honor the amount that's in the personnel policy, the breakdown of the lunches. I just wanna know, so when they put in their things, I will then calculate the difference, and I will make sure that they are adequately paid, so the city does not have a grievance filed against them.
If you choose to do that.
I'm going to choose to do that, to save the headache for everybody else involved in this. Because we are literally fighting over less than $100.
My guess is, if it's coming out of your pocket or somebody else, it's maybe gonna make the light bulb go off in somebody's mind, too, that maybe I shouldn't be pushing this to the limit each and every time.
I respectfully disagree with you on some of that.
There's a lot of things that we respectfully disagree about.
What's gonna end up happening is these, in particular, officers who are not putting in for it are going to start putting in for it, too.
If you think so.
That's what's gonna happen.
Okay. And there's a procedure for all of that.
Yeah, and the procedure will be that they'll know that they're gonna get reimbursed, and I will make up the difference to them.
That's very nice of you.
Yes.
Okay, I think we need to move on. We need to, is there unfinished business that we have, or any more bills anybody looked at that need to be talked about? Okay, then we have new business, is the approval of the minutes for June 16th, 2025? Can I get a motion for that?
I'll give you a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, those pass. Is there any audience comments?
Do I have to introduce myself?
I don't know.
I have a question. At budget time, I asked the committee to consider some kind of stipend or a city telephone for city office workers to use. We are the only department that uses our personal phones. There are four of us. We do not get reimbursement. There is not a city phone. We are expected to contact department heads. They expect that from us. When I email information to them, they come back and say to me, "Don't email. Text." That means I'm using my own phone. Some time ago, when I brought this up before, I was told to email. I have honored that. I have been told that. I have been given a directive. The others in the office answer to a different party, and they text. So, my question, can City Hall get at least one phone that we can share, so we're a team and we're all working together? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, in regards to the latest debate on the meal allowances, the question I have is, are the city administrators, are the city council okay with the cost associated to doing grievances and legal ramification costs of that versus the city administrator upholding the duties of the responsibility of managing the ordinances that are in terms of execution policy recommendations and administration? And if this has been going on since May, then why hasn't our city administrator stood up and said, "Hey, we gotta fix this ordinance, because our first responding boys in blue, women in blue, are not able to utilize the ME&amp;I that it should be utilized as." So, if the ordinance is out of whack, I think what Alderman Robinson is saying is, "Hey, red flag, we need to look at this and fix it." And if the ordinance is out of whack, then the city administrator should be bringing that to the council's attention with the advice of legal counsel. So, I guess I'm just trying to understand how the wheel turns here, 'cause look at us on the hamster wheel. We're just spinning, spinning since May, and that's not fair to the officers. Second question I have is, in regards to finance, I just wanna understand this thing that I heard on the YouTube video about the EV charging program. I believe it's the one with ComEd that you guys have decided to bite on or figure out if it's for the betterment of our city. I just wanna understand, do we have something in our budget right now to do EV charging stations? Because I don't believe that it's all covered. I believe that there is a dollar amount that will be applied through a grant, but I don't think they're just gonna come in and do it all for you. It's your infrastructure and your curbing and the correct way that the vehicles point or whatever, so that they can be plugged in. I don't know if that's covered, and so I just wondered, we don't have that in our budget, so why would we even spend our time on even acknowledging that? I just, I wanna understand that, so. And I have another comment for that, which is, I just filled up my F-150. It costed me $48.97. So, if y'all wanna start fueling vehicles as part of city responsibility, I can bring you my receipt, and you can just pay me for my gas. Thank you.
Okay, any more audience comments? Okay, can I get a motion to send the bills to council?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Okay, I need for you guys to look at this real quick.
Good evening. Welcome to the City of Sandwich Committee of the Hall meeting. Today is Monday, July 7th. The time being 7:00 PM. Meeting is called to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Chief Sandy, go ahead and lead it while you're there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Arnett?
Here.
Alderman Chun?
Here.
Alderman Dankel?
Alderwoman Erickson?
Here.
Alderwoman Enman?
Here.
Alderman Ketchum?
Here.
Alderman Crimbrink?
Here.
And Alderman Robinson?
Here.
All right, Quorum President, we'll move on with the mayor's report. Only item I have for the committee of the Hall is the swearing-in of lateral police officer William Hanson. Will you please come forward?
Okay.
All right, Patrolman Hanson, I wish you a long and successful career here. Welcome. Next item is our attorney report.
I don't have anything other than what's already on the agenda, and I'll chime in then.
City clerk report.
Okay, I have several items very quickly. You'll notice a yellow sheet that says executive session. I passed that out to all the council. I had been asked what items can be discussed in executive session, and I think that is self-explanatory. At the last meeting, we had discussed briefly about a cutoff for items for the agenda, and I prematurely said by noon on Thursday would work. It didn't. Jeff, myself, found ourselves here on the Fourth of July in the morning, trying to get that agenda out. So, I am proposing noon on Wednesday, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. I think we should be able to pull it off, so no one's working overtime or having to come in on the weekends. Late notices on water bills went out last week. This would cover most of Ward 1, some portions of Ward 4. 209 late charges went out, or late charge notices. That area is our largest area, and approximately 1,100 bills are mailed out. My next question is food truck vendors. There were some vendors here this weekend that were not licensed. I have proposed and have already changed the application that we must have at least 72 hours' notice in preparing these licenses. My question is, what does the council want me to do, if anything, for these vendors that were not licensed?
So, the clerk and I agree that we should have proper notice from those that wanna do business within the City of Sandwich, and we've been trying to get them to come in earlier. So, we always deal with those that come in at the last minute. I wouldn't say demand, but expect. We'll do whatever we need to, and many times, they don't have the proper documentation or requirements, so that's something we probably should look at. Whether it's a procedural issue, or we just simply put it on the application that has to be in by so many days before the event, you're certainly welcome to discuss the item at the clerk's request. Okay, well, if you have thoughts or comments, share them. If not, you can email those to our clerk.
Is there a list that you keep as far as who has licenses?
At one point, I had on every desk area the list of approved. Those are the ones that have annual license. It's the ones that for the special event, they come in the night before and say, "Okay, I need a license tomorrow." It's not gonna happen. It's literally impossible to do that.
I would maybe suggest, who's ever doing the special event, I know if it was a city-sponsored thing, they wouldn't need them, I believe. So, if someone's having a special event, if we're allowing that to happen, maybe have the event coordinator let us know ahead of time who's coming. And I know sometimes that's not possible, because somebody might have a plan to be at a different location, and plans change, so they can then make it last minute. And like you said, it's fine with the ones that have a license, but it's the ones that don't. But especially if it's ones that continue to come to town and don't have a license, because typically it's going to be of an evening or a weekend when there's not city staff on duty. So, code enforcement's not around. The only other option would be the PD, similar to how it used to be with the old ice cream trucks coming through town that aren't licensed and things like that. So, just a suggestion.
Well, I think we'll start with the approach of making an administrative change to our forum with the deadline, and see how that works out for us. And some of them are the same people that this happens with, that come in all the time, right? Okay, anything else, Denise?
No.
Okay. Treasurer's report, Sandra Kohler?
I apologize. I have been kind of out of town for the most part of three weeks 'cause of an accident with my kids and the birth of my great-grandsons. So, I tried to explain to everyone concerned in City Hall and our Angela, Michelle, et cetera. What I exactly needed to do, a complete and accurate financial report, was that I needed PDF files. I'm not getting PDF files, or I'm getting copies of copies that numbers are cut off, which, I had it right here, like such as the finance committee sheet. All of these are cut off, all these numbers, to where they go, what account. And Angela attempted to make another copy. She offered, I didn't ask, by the way. And when she went to her computer and printed it, it came back off the exact same way, cut off completely on the left side of the page, so all of the numbers are cut off. So, that needs to be accurately handled, so that we can do that. And then, I have a letter which explains it in more detail, but I didn't get it done until 6:15 tonight. I'll give it over to Jeff and anybody else that wants a copy of it. Interest allocation is not a PDF. There are things that say treasurer's report that are not actually treasurer's reports, and they're not PDF, so I can't get the information, those to do a proper report. And the scheduled claims list, as I said, is not coming through correctly either. It's also doing everything crooked. So, if we can get that together, I can do a more detailed report. I don't see, in the numbers that I have gone over, that there's any humongous red flags other than, I will give it to Jeff and see if we can't clean up the eight minor things that are going wrong, where accounts aren't being put in the right place, et cetera. And that's basically all I have.
Okay. Any questions for our treasurer? Okay, thank you. City Administrator report, Jeff Pemen?
Good evening. As everybody could tell, Main Street's got started this morning. A little saw cutting in the pavement. They're beginning to move along on that. The City Hall roof and gutter repair is out to bid. We had a pre-bid meeting last week. Bid opening scheduled for the 17th. That's the problem we were having on the east side of the City Hall. The street department building, the tuck pointing that came up last time, those, we had a pre-bid bidding, meeting on the second, the same as this other one, and then it'll also be on the 17th to open it. Two items, as you can tell, the air conditioning is still not working. We're still seeking another bid, or bid quote, excuse me. We do have three, but I'd like to get one more. They are not as tight as I'd like them at this point in time, but I would like authorization to move ahead. Unfortunately, right now, it's looking at about $35,000, so we will have to waive the bid requirement. In order to do that, it's still gonna be four to six weeks at least, probably five to six, just because they're having a hard time getting the units that we need to be able to replace them. So, we did, I had our internship student do some research this afternoon on a spot cooler. If we decided to do a couple of those in here for the summer, we're probably talking $4,500 to $6,000 for, that would take us into September. So, something to consider if we wanted to spend the money. Tonight, it's not as terrible as normal, but, you know, it may be worse next month, so. And then also, the factor building. In the budget, we've got $35,000 in there estimated to redo the siding and the gutters on that property, or on that building. We do have one price from A&amp;B Exteriors. It's right about $35,000. My question to the council is, is this something, because it's a local company, do we wanna just go ahead and waive the bid and award it to them, or do we wanna go through the process of putting this out to bid? It's probably gonna be a few thousand dollars of architect work to be able to get that stuff together and get it out. So, that's the reason I'm asking, is I don't wanna spend money on an architect if this is where we're gonna wind up, anyway. So, I would just be looking for consensus on that.
Right, mayor from council, wanna give a comment?
Adam, I mean, is there a spec anywhere as far as what we want quoted?
I mean, it's new siding all the way around. It's, yeah, I can show you the quote from-
What are they including? Are they taking down? They papering it? Are they-
Well, and that's, that's the whole thing, Adam, is that we've got- Here's a quote, if you guys would like to take a look at it.
And let me know if you want it. And let me know if you want it.
And that's just one quote. Ironically, I ran across in an older file a quote from 2021 where the repairs were much less. But it wasn't for all four sides at that time either. So I guess that's, I'm just looking for direction on that one. If you want me to put it out to bid, I will, but if it's one of those that we're going to wind up in the same place, it doesn't make sense to spend the money.
Well, I do have a question. Since I was with Streets, I looked inside the building, and the salt is piled pretty high. So they do talk about plywood replacement on this?
Yes.
Is there a plan in place? If they are going to pull off a lower sheet of plywood, and we already have tons of salt leaning against it?
Well, I got this about 3:30 today. So if it's, if there's additional questions, let's look at it. But there is, there's an amount in there for additional plywood repair if needed. Approximately, to give you an idea, there's a purse, there's a number of squares in there, and from what I understand, there's three sheets of plywood in each square if they all were bad. So, you know, that's, that's something we would have to deal with at that point in time. I also know that we've talked about IVEC doing some repairs. I mean, this might be a good project for them as well. I'm just throwing it out there. Save some money and give the students a project that's pretty straightforward. Siding's been like this for a while. Yeah, the quote that I had before was from 2021. Yeah. I mean, they might even be, they might be busy and they might not be able to absorb the work either, so.
Correct.
It might be nice just to reach out to them. Personally, I'd like to see more quotes come in. Just because, I mean, they are a local vendor, they've done work for me personally, but there are others in the area. There's other individuals that are private contractors that would have to pay the prevailing wage scale and everything like that if they have employees, but they might choose to do it on their own. So, okay. That's just me, I'm one person, so don't take a straw poll or you can do whatever.
Option two makes more sense to me.
Anyone else on council have a comment? I'm sorry, I should have explained, option two is the one we would consider. I mean, it doesn't make sense to do one side.
Do it all the way.
And that's where it gets up there, around that thirty-five thousand dollar amount, is when you add that in, and then you add the two items from below as far as wrapping it in aluminum, and then... And I gave away all of mine, so I forget what the third one was, but...
As far as I'm concerned, in going off what Fred had to say, I don't have anything against A and B, but covering legality of things. If we're a bid at thirty-five thousand, I think we should at least explore a couple more bids just so we can say we did it.
Well, and part of what I'm running into, even with the air conditioning, that's an air, that I consider that an emergency repair, and trying to get, trying to get quotes that are apples to apples is difficult. And that's the reason that I would recommend, if that's really what we want to do, then we're going to need to spend the money with an architect to put this out to bid.
Well, if we're essentially looking at option two?
Yes.
We're trading option two as our spec.
Okay.
It is essentially what we're doing. We're saying we would like to have this done, so we send it out to companies and say this is what we would like to have done.
That makes sense. Option two only makes sense to me, so that is our spec.
All right, then that's what we'll do.
Okay, any other questions for Jeff? Is that all?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Good. All right, moving on to our city reports, Chief Cuddy?
Yes, I just want to go over our recent events that we've had. So we had an explorer meeting, and I talked about before, they did the training at Judson University, the explorers. It was very well-perceived, got a lot of good feedback from other agencies that were there. Attended a luncheon learn, coffee before business. We went to the Plano Molding Pre-July Fourth Party where we shared lemonade with them. We participated in Freedom Days, and then the car show downtown, too. I want to give a special thanks to EMA, Public Works, the Park District, the Police Explorers, and the U.S. Volunteers Joint Service Command for their outstanding work and support during Freedom Days. The trade was an overall success. Here's some department updates. Lateral application, met with the police commission last week. There is one new lateral applicant. The police commission is hoping to meet with, interview that particular subject at the end of this month. They're looking to schedule that. Just some hiring status, too. Detective Raminsky is currently following up on the remaining six candidates that are listed on our initial eligibility list to determine if they are still interested in being the police or if they have landed a job at another police agency. We all met Officer Hanson. He, today was his first day. He's scheduled to begin his field training with Officer Favella on July the 12th. His field training will be anywhere between ten to twelve weeks, so that'll put him in September, October for him to be released to solo patrol. K-9 Muscles, she successfully passed her state recertification exam. She's required to take a recertification exam every single year. And then I want to lead a letter of, a letter for, a thank you letter for Officer Raminsky, now Detective Raminsky. Just a summary, the event happened on May the 14th. Officer Raminsky demonstrated strong investigative skill and professionalism while handling a highly sensitive and complex case involving allegations of child sexual abuse and an unlawful video recording. He thoroughly interviewed all involved parties. Detective Raminsky collaborated with the Hinkley Police Department, documented evidence properly, obtained digital evidence, and secured a signed consent form to search the residence and devices. He exercised sound judgment and restraint consulting with the DeKalb County State's Attorney's Office before making an arrest and involved officers who had a rapport with the offender to make the process very smooth. His coordination with DCFS and the Child Advocacy Center, along with detailed documentation and clear communication, ensured that the situation was handled with professionalism, compassion, and care, exemplifying the high standards expected of law enforcement in a emotionally charged and legally complex investigation. Want to just congratulate him on the job that was well done there. I gave you guys my monthly report for May, since it was not at last month's meeting. Just want a couple highlights there. Just want to note for the month of May, the officers proactive was at eighty percent. So of our call volume, eighty percent was proactive policing. For the year, we are currently at eighty-three percent being proactive policing. Trends, we did see an increase in call volume on the weekends, especially Fridays and Saturdays, which is typical for the normal weather. And then just some notable activity, there were several excellent arrests that were made during the month, which then took away from some of the other stuff that, if you look at our activity, there were some lower numbers, but nothing that I am concerned about in lower numbers based on the totality of everything that we had going on for the, for the month. Just some upcoming items that I just want to bring to you guys' attention. For the first meeting in August, I'm looking to do a presentation pertaining to the squad car money that's been frozen with some different options of purchasing one squad car, the possibility of getting several squad cars under a leasing program. I'll bring information for that on the first, first meeting in August. Just some community events want to highlight, National Night Out set for August the 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We are partnering with Johnny Kay's and the Movie Theater, so we'll be using their lot off of Route 34. We're going to have some activities which include the dunk tank, so if anybody wants to volunteer to be in the dunk tank, feel free. I'll be in there, and then I think my son will come. He had a blast last year in there. I had to pry him out. We're also going to balloon artists, some face painting. If anybody is interested in partnering with us more or setting up a booth or table, please reach out to Sergeant White Cotton to participate in that. Popsicle events, we're going to be having some pop-up popsicle events in the next couple of weeks. If anybody, organization is interested in having us come out and hand out some popsicles, please contact Sergeant White Cotton on that event, too. And an administrative note, I'm going to be on vacation from July 19th to the 28th. During that time, Sergeant Dan White Cotton will be the acting chief of police. I always like to do, remind the public of our dashboard that we have, where we get a lot, there's a lot of great information on the public dashboard that's on there. That's on our webpage, too. And then just closing, as usual, I just want to give a sincere thank you to all the officers for their continued dedication to professionalism that they display day in and day out.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Questions for Chief Cuddy?
Yeah, what are you finding out with, you had over fifty 911 hangups? What?
So a lot of those calls...
That's a big jump.
Yeah, so we typically probably average one to two a day from the hospital, and that's just people trying to get out. And just so you know, on a lot of those 911 hangups, we actually don't respond to those calls, especially if the communication center is able to make contact with them, especially the hospital, in the hospital setting, the security officers will go check to see if there's any issues before we actually get dispatched. So the vast majority of those calls, we, we're not responding to. They're just noted that the, that the dispatch gives them out to the officers.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, moving on to the engineer report, Kurt Detman.
EEI? All right. Jeff had already mentioned a little bit about Main Street, getting going out there, traffic control all in place. Santeri Sewer, the first order of business, getting in full swing this week. The wastewater treatment plant, so working out some contract, with the contractor, some punchless items, restoration, various things, and then also the digester repair. There's also some construction going on, the Sandy Bluff Solar Farm moving way ahead of schedule, and that's going to be, those guys are very motivated to get that project done, so hopefully that'll be finished up here, you know, before the end of the summer, for sure, and maybe before the end of July, we'll see. The other big project going on, Fair Winds Phase 4A, those guys are moving along right now. They're going on their underground installations, so that's all I've got.
Okay, questions for Kurt? Okay, thank you, Kurt. Moving on to the council reports, Alderman Arnett?
I got a couple of things I want to talk about. First and foremost, I talked to Fred a little bit about this. I've had some residents come to me and talk about a fifty-fifty program with the City of Sandwich and sidewalks. We're always looking to save money as a city. And if we have residents that are willing to pay fifty-fifty, I don't know why we wouldn't do it. It's helping the resident out, financially, it's helping the city out. So if you guys have anybody in your ward that has contacted you about a fifty-fifty program, let's get together and sit down, figure out the addresses, go look at the sidewalks, and see what we could possibly do as a council and as a city, help out our residents and save some money. Just try it out to begin with and see how it works.
This used to be in place.
It did use to be in place. Years ago it was.
And it worked.
But I'd like to see if we can try getting something like that going again. It'll ultimately save us money and get work done.
I agree.
Also, what I'd like to bring up, I talked to Jeff about this, I've talked to Nick about it, I've talked to Ian about it. It was Fair Winds. So, and Jeff does not have a copy of the SWP Plan digitally. Do you have one, Kurt?
It's posted on, it's posted at the site.
Right, but if anybody has it, if they could forward me a copy so I can sit and read it?
Okay.
Versus sitting out there for an hour reading the book. I sat out there, they're reading because I've already started getting phone calls and texts regarding dust. I've got email I can forward to you. I did go out there and read to where it states that, and you obviously know they can't create excessive dust and whatnot, and there are dust control measures built into the SWP Plan.
The dust control measures are meant for like tracking, like in the site itself. It's a tricky issue. They do have to do de-watering at some point.
Correct.
To keep the, keep the dust down, and it's hard to patrol that part of it. The easy one is the streets. That one has to be clean. You're not tracking anything like that when you're on the site and they're in there working. It's hard to tell them to, okay, keep water down there. What they should be doing is they should be putting water down just to get rid of some of that dust, either, you know, at the beginning of the day, middle of the day, end of the day, so they can try to...
And one of very, very dry months. And the houses that butt right up against it, is one of the pictures I got. Obviously, it's a construction site. There's going to be dust, there's going to be debris. But the pictures that I was sent was very excessive. And the problems that started, as I had contacted Nick, is the contractor started the day before the SWP protection was actually in place. And time and time again, the HOA has been told, these are your ponds, these are your ponds to maintain. So when we have a contractor start early and they're hauling dirt and debris off the road, and that afternoon, we did have a very big storm in the afternoon, which means all that silt and sediment is being washed into their ponds that they have to maintain. I just want to, I know Ian is doing a great job. He's stretched really thin, but as a city, if there's any way, if we can send Kevin out from time to time and teach him how to look at the SWP book, read the SWP book, make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's just, we need to look out for them. I've been contacted by them, and as their alderman, that's what I'm going to do.
Well, as far as SWP goes, weekly inspections have to be done, so if they're not doing them, that's a violation.
Correct.
So...
Starting before SWP protection was in place was also...
Well, yes. I mean, if they started, if they're starting construction before the silt fence was up, one day, I mean, pretty hard to, if they're out there doing it and no one catches them that one day, it's pretty hard.
Well, that one day, I got inundated with texts and phone calls, and that's when I was sending them into the city. The following morning, I left my house and I watched the silt truck, or the silt fence truck go by a day later. They're concerned because it's their ponds to maintain. We're telling them, they have to spend their money, they have to take care of things. And as a city, we need to do our due diligence to help them and maintain those ponds the way they should be, and we shouldn't be affecting them. That's kind of where I'm at with it.
Well, if it's already happened, I don't know what we can do about it except for checking them and making sure that everything's working.
And that's all I'm asking, is if we can, it does, I don't, like I said, Ian and I know he's really busy. If we could have Kevin go out in the morning, make sure they've done something to keep the dust down, because there's baskets that have to be checked, there's reports that have to be checked after, that have to be done after every significant rainfall, stuff like that. I know as a city, we have the capability of keeping an eye on it, and I know you guys are doing what you have to do on it. But when I start, the very beginning of a project, just getting inundated with texts and phone calls and pictures, it's not a great start. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, because HOA, I've been in contact with Scott, President of the Board. I've been in contact with several members of the board regarding the homes that are going to be built out there. And has the city seen renditions of the homes that are going to be built?
I haven't personally, but the building department did.
Because the HOA is asking for renditions of the built, homes that are going to be built there. Essentially, all the HOA is a mini city council. They have to look out for their residents, they have to look out for their properties, their property values and stuff like that. So what they're not looking for is the same five home lanes that's currently built, but they would like to see what is going to go in, because it's going to be their neighborhood. It is going to be part of the HOA.
I mean, I know that I was asked about this by Ian, and we've kind of discussed this in the past, but the HOA, you know, their covenants, they are part of the property records, and so they need to be working directly with the developer.
Well, they're trying to work with the developer through the city.
But that, I mean, I think the thing is, that's not the city's place to get involved with HOA stuff.
If they're getting no response at all, then where do they go to?
I'm sorry?
If they're getting no response, where do they go to?
I guess they'd have to look at the covenants and see what their, I mean, it's a civil, like, issue that isn't a municipal issue.
So they need to lawyer up and then put an injunction in and stop the...
I haven't looked at the covenants or declarations to know, you know, what the requirements are. If they're not abiding by them, I guess technically, probably yes.
I'll let them know that. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, is that it, Adam? Anything else? Okay. Alderman John?
I have nothing at this time.
Alderman Danko?
The fire hydrant at Wright Court has been replaced and is operational. The guys did a good job. The fire hydrant that's backed right now on Lyons Road by the softball field, that is scheduled to be replaced this Thursday, the 10th, which leaves us three more hydrants that have problems. There's one at Star 34, by Star 34, Davis and 34, that will need a new hydrant. There's a dead end at Susan and Crowfoot. They're recommending we, that's an old, old two-port hydrant, and that one should, will need to be replaced. And then the other one, more that's problematic, is the one at Wells and South. That will get a repair kit. Now, the ones at Davis and Susan and Wells and South, they are operational. The problem is if we turn them on, we don't know if we can get them shut off. So, but that's where we're at. Those three are being looked at, and it looks like we can get them all taken care of in like forty-five to sixty days. So that's where we're at.
Okay, anything else, Don?
No, that's what I have on the water.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Erickson?
I got your email today about Vale Street with Mr. Weekly. I did go check that out. It's, I'm assuming he's talking about all the repair, the, like, seal coating or whatever it is for the... There's a lot of cracks in the road. It's very bumpy. I think that's what he was referring to, if I'm not mistaken. So yes, I did check that out. out, I'll get with Kurt, see if we can try and figure something out for that maybe. It's, it's gonna be that whole road that we're gonna have to figure out how to do something with. It's pretty bad, it's very bumpy.
What road again was that?
Vale.
Vale.
And that's all I got right now.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Edman?
Um, I just wanted to thank whoever mowed the empty lot at Fifth and Castle, I don't know who did it, or, but it looks nice, and the residents really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Ketchum?
Nothing right now.
Alderman Crainbrink?
I just wanted to thank Alderman Arnett for reaching out to me about that fifty-fifty program, I think that's a, a great concept to rejuvenate. We do have some people within the city limits here that are more than willing to participate their fair share to take care of their property because they, they really like to keep their property up. I thought that it would be good to do a trial basis and figure out what we have, where we will have to get the engineering firm involved because there could be ADA rules and regulations that we have to comply with, so it's just not gonna be as simple as doing it, right? But it's gonna be quicker possibly than what we've done in the past, so I think that's great. Also think it's great for everybody that participated with the, the parade this weekend, so Sandra, thank you for putting it together and getting us all, all lined up, we had a good time, passed out a lot of water, a lot of candy, I got to sit inside where it was cooler, so thank you guys for walking. Next, next time somebody else can drive and I'll walk, how's that sound? But I thought it was great, great camaraderie, great teamwork, so thank you very much.
Okay, Alderman Robinson?
Just a couple of things, Denise had already mentioned that, as far as the agenda, and I was just gonna make mention that this is the second time, in two weeks, last meeting and then this meeting, where I had wanted to put something on the agenda and it didn't make the agenda, either agenda. And one of the things I wanted to talk about was just a continuation of what I talked about two weeks ago, which was my understanding of what we were told at budget time with restricted items in the budget, which to me had to do with basically more discussion, council discussion on new hires. And when I say new hires, I mean new hires, new positions in the budget, or new positions that we have not had before. I'm not talking about a position where we're just, you know, replacing an officer because we were short, or, you know, somebody left and we're filling a spot. I'm not talking about a freeze on those, I'm talking about a freeze on any new position that we had in the budget, because, again, like I mentioned two weeks ago, I thought at budget time, the council had put that in there, but apparently had a misunderstanding as far as what the restriction made. What I had tried to get on the budget tonight was to ask for a moratorium or a resolution, I was going to submit a sample resolution over the weekend, and when I saw the agenda come out, I didn't think it was worthwhile to even bother sending out at that time, since we wouldn't be able to act on it anyway. But, I guess if nothing else, just to mention for the council, if it's something we wanna do, we need to give direction to the mayor and to the city administrator if we want them to let us have further discussion before any new hires or new positions. And that's why I was gonna suggest some sort of a moratorium or freeze to make it formal, because I'm not sure if just our direction, talking during a meeting, is enough, or if it has any standing, so it's something we're gonna have to continue to discuss, and please anybody else feel free to speak up, but it seems like when we talk individually, and again, when the budget was passed, although four of you were not on the council, when the budget was passed, that was the understanding and the intent of the majority of the council, and the ones that have been on the council, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the understanding for the restricted. That's all I had to say about that right now. Second thing I was going to ask about was, I had a couple of questions in the last couple of weeks about some liquor license, liquor code issues, and, again, I don't know if it's just because I've been around for a while that people were asking and opinions and things like that, but apparently there's a issue or a question, reference six dash fifty-two, the location of premise in our liquor code, and I'm just wondering if that's been cleared up yet with either the applicants or who's asking whatever about it?
Yeah, so I responded to the individual that inquired and gave them that part of the code. The problem is, it's interpreted, I think, two different ways, right? One of them says essentially, one could read it and say, you can't have more than one license, one can read it and say, you can't get a license for location A and then use it for location B. So we did some research to try to figure out if we could, our clerks pulled a couple of the last conversations on it, we didn't find anything to tell us one way or the other is the issue at hand. So I responded back to the individual and said, you know, you might wanna consult with your own attorney, and see if they interpret differently, and our legal counsel's been made aware of it as well, so I think it's just a difference of opinion, how you read the code.
How, how are we reading it? Because I see it under the location of premise, so I'm kinda viewing it where it just means you couldn't have one license and operate at two different locations.
That's, that's how I read it.
That's how I read it too, and that's, I believe, what this individual was told.
Okay.
But it.
They might have misunderstood because they thought they couldn't have two separate licenses, one for one location, one separate business, and then a different liquor license for a different business.
No, and I don't, I don't think that's what the mayor said, or.
They might have misunderstood then.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's our interpretation, and originally I just wasn't even sure where this was coming from, and I don't, I guess, the last question seemed like they wanted something formal, but I don't know what to give them.
Okay.
But, yeah, our interpretation is certainly the location, that being said, and you guys obviously can do what you want, it might not hurt to clear it up, because as I, when I first read it, I immediately went location, but then he made a second inquiry, and so I, I was like, what is he talking about? And then I read it again, and I said, well, I guess maybe that is the concern. So, it might not be a terrible idea to clean that up, but that would be up to the council.
Okay. So appears rich, the language has changed from, at least maybe far back, I guess the sixties or the eighties. I'm sure at one time somebody didn't wanna monopolize, or somebody comes in and buys all the license, or has multiple ones, and every part of that I said, well, what if you have a Casey's East and a Casey's West?
Right.
And it's one company, they're at two locations, and my one question back was, is about how this individual's gonna hold the ownership of that. Were you still one company holding two places, or were you two separate companies? Just so we can understand too, what their process was to become and change ownership.
Okay.
I still think it's very unclear, 'cause somebody could read it two different ways.
Right.
Mine is, I get at some point somebody probably didn't want somebody to have three or four liquor licenses and own all the liquor stores in town, and I see it as today McDonald's is selling beer and a Big Mac, and they open up another franchise by somebody else in a larger community, they'd have a beer and a Big Mac, and so I think, I personally believe that's the intent of it, is just, you have to have, you can't have one license for two locations, you have to have two separate licenses, and then we didn't hear anything back, so.
And that's not a bad meal offering either.
No, and I think that, one of the things I had thought, because Denise was going to look to see if there's any, I wasn't sure if it was intentionally vague.
Okay.
From a long time ago.
Sure.
So, but that's, I interpret it certainly as the two locations.
We, we couldn't find anything clear in any discussion that was had by the previous councils on that, it just seemed like the code was changed, we didn't know if it was through the codification process, or there was some other council.
Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. And the only other thing I had wrote down was, I saw with our update from the city administrator, it talked about advertising for an assistant superintendent of water, and I guess I was just curious about that, 'cause I thought, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about advertising for a water superintendent. Was I wrong on that? Did I miss?
No, I thought that's what we talked about, a full-time water superintendent, that's needed.
Okay.
'Cause it was brought up to vote under the mayor's comments, and I believe it was item A, merging Brad Eadie and the two departments, and I personally didn't feel it was a good idea.
I still don't think it's a good idea, we need our full-time water superintendent. We had one, I don't know what the issue is.
So I was just bringing that up, because if we're advertising for the wrong thing, we probably wanna stop advertising for that and advertise for the full position, if that's what the city's gonna do.
Well, I guess my question would be, what does a superintendent do, Don, that assistant superintendent can't?
The full-time, no, no half-time doing it, not Brad doing it half, half sewer, half water.
That's done, you already voted that down.
We already voted that down. So we should be advertising for a full-time water superintendent.
It is a full-time, it just has a different title.
So then that's a new position.
Well, it's just, it's a water superintendent.
It's a new position, not a new hire.
Right.
So it's a new position that wasn't agreed upon with us, correct? Am I right or wrong?
So I guess, I just wanna clarify, if you guys look at the code, the mayor's the one, and I think, I got cut off the last time, we can change the processes, if you guys wanna change the processes, that can be done, but the way the code is written is that, like, the mayor is the CEO and he does the hiring and firing. Obviously, the department heads have to be approved by you guys, and so, I, I want, I guess this was something I was gonna talk about in the next meeting, but I think that we need to all kind of come together and talk about the various roles that everyone has, and how we want to see those played out in the future, 'cause the, that's what the code says right now. And so, yes, you have to approve the appointments, and then what, in line with the budget, is what you guys do is set the budget, and then the employees, the mayor, administrator are in charge of maintaining that budget, and so, if you wanted to change that, you'd want to amend your budget to reduce the expenses.
I guess, what I don't understand what you're saying is that, I've never known where the mayor could just hire anybody they want to without, I mean, you're talking, just create positions and that's it?
I guess if it were within the budget, theoretically.
Just because it's budgeted doesn't mean it's okay to spend the money, a budget is a guideline. I am tired of hearing, it's already in the budget, it's already approved, no, that's not the way this council should be operated.
Well, and I, like I said, there are different processes that various municipalities use, but the, when you read it, that's just what it says.
Well, our, our, our code could be wrong then, because I, it's always been a council decision for the, the approval of the, the hiring, or, or not, I shouldn't even say the hire, the, the positions. I mean, it, it, if we only want fourteen police officers, that's up to the city council to, to make that happen.
Well, it's kinda like we have an intern working right now that we didn't even approve for.
But, I guess, like, there's nothing in the code that says how many positions are for any, I mean, does it say how many police officers?
No, we, we've had a, we've had a set limit from a couple of years ago, where it went from, I wanna say, I think it was at sixteen, and it went to fifteen if I, last I recall, is where it went. And that was.
And one man, and one administrative position was cut too.
Which administration position?
It was Mike Nelson, we didn't replace him.
Never replaced Mr. Nelson.
Well, that was, I mean, community service officer.
It was still a position within the police department. Yeah, and I think when that all happened, we, we came together with a plan, like, strategically with the police chief and as a council, to develop that plan and how we're gonna move forward, and then think about our strategy, right? I think what we're trying to convey here, or what Cassandra's trying to convey here is, even though it's in the budget, right, you're taking, on the water side, you're taking a superintendent, you're making an assistant a superintendent, so you're changing the title, so it's reclassification, so you're still getting the same bandwidth out of that individual, it's just gonna be at a lower gradient, a lower pay, with some assistance, some oversight, doesn't mean that later on that position won't be upgraded to a superintendent, but I think we're gonna have trouble bringing people, this is my opinion, you're gonna have trouble bringing somebody in at the pay scale, at the superintendent wage, that has the, all the credentials and everything, so you're kinda like homegrowing somebody internally to then bring and foster into that next layer, to that next, next gradient, so. And I, and I get what, what you're saying, Don, is about the, the timing, or the not having a full-time person there, but you're still gonna have a full-time person there, you're actually, you're actually benefiting because you have a full-time person there, plus then you have an assistant helping or a superintendent helping.
I don't understand how that would go, because they were originally talking about taking a current employee and splitting his job duties, that's not a full-time person.
I, I believe that it's, probably just need a little bit more clarity as to what it is, but it's, it's basically gonna provide the oversight, is my interpretation of what was conveyed to us previously.
Adam, what did you feel that was?
Well, I went and talked to him, he doesn't want that position, so, I don't even know why we're talking about making him do anything if he doesn't want the position. You can't force someone to do something, especially for no more pay. He's doing a great job at the sewer, so let's give him part-time at the sewer and then put part-time at the water?
And that's a relevant statement.
That makes no sense at all. So look at me, I'm done, you made your decision, I've moved on. You're the one still talking about it as a council. I replaced FTE, one FTE with one FTE. To me, it's ridiculous to have a superintendent and one employee at any department in the city of Sandwich. This is a person that we need to see if they're actually gonna be able to perform all the functions that they would in the water department, before that gives us a chance to evaluate the person and then determine if we wanna promote them, and if they're the right person that we do wanna promote.
I just wanna go back on what Richard said, because the budget never would've passed, we did ask for things to be frozen, tried to keep finances down for the residents of Sandwich, and the budget never would've passed. We left that budget meeting believing, as a council, those positions were going to be frozen until further discussion at council.
And that's why I'm just saying, if we use the wrong wording or language at budget time, that's why I would prefer to go ahead and do some sort of a resolution, or verbal moratorium, or whatever, where we freeze it, and if we need to change the code, so it's, there's, again, some oversight of the council, to me it seems silly that there's no oversight for us, for any of the positions, except for the appointed superintendent. We have to approve the superintendent's, the chief, city administrator, but other than that.
It's what the code says.
I can't, I don't know, the pages that I'm trying to reference are not in here, which, and I guess it's because it's a supplement, so I don't necessarily know how to find them.
And again, I, I didn't think we were gonna get anything necessarily decided tonight, I just wanted to make sure I don't let it just fall by the wayside.
Would you be able to take what, what positions you think should be? Like, there's all kinds of them in here.
I don't want it up to me.
And, and we, but, I mean, list them out and then put it out and say, hold, hold, hold.
As far as like what's in the budget, you mean?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
But to be honest with you, I thought we had done that the year before too, and we didn't.
No, I'm talking about, like, right now, to, to set it in stone as to what, what is doable and what shouldn't be pushed through, you know? We're, we're finally getting some traction and making some momentum, and we're having some changes, and then now we're going back.
And, and if it's a full-time position for water, I'd rather see him be the superintendent, you already got somebody in water, and then.
Costs you like twenty-five thousand dollars more, just for the title.
But, but if you're getting somebody that's licensed, and, and that's, which I, I, I recall.
This, this is a licensed position, this is a classified.
Correct, but I'm saying you have to have a certain license to run the sewer, correct? You also need a.
You need a one.
A, a certain license to run water, correct? Right, that's why we're paying somebody extra to sign paperwork.
Yep.
Believe me, whoever we get's gonna earn that money, 'cause they're gonna be drinking from a fire hose with the mess we have with the water. We got a pump station right across the street, it's not gonna be, if it falls down, it's gonna be. We got a pump station right across the street. It's not going to be if it falls down, it's going to be when it falls down. And we cannot keep this kicking this can down the road.
How long have you lived there, Mr. Danko? I bet you-
Twenty-six years.
Before you moved here. It's-
Yeah, that building's been there since nineteen thirty-nine.
I mean, it's not like, uh, this is like a new problem for me and it's my fault or this council's. This has gone on for a long time.
Long time.
And we only have so much money. So we've made prudent choices. I've had really good hires. We've retained a lot of employees since I've been mayor. And I've included our superintendents, our employees in the hiring process. That's why we've done well. Right, Chief? Got a nice police commissioner that's done a good job?
Yes, they have.
When we hire someone for streets, the streets overtime is part of the interview process. We do two or three stages of interviews. And that's how we change the process and we've been really good with the employees that we've had.
I did point out before though, that we did have somebody in the water department that had applied and had equivalent licenses, what our top guy did, if not more. And we didn't offer that person a job. We hired somebody internally that didn't have the most basic water license for the water department. So it hasn't always worked. And I'm not saying that because you-
That was a recommendation by the superintendents for that position.
Correct. And that's why I'm saying, sometimes, yes, it is helpful to have, but it shouldn't specifically be up to the superintendent in a situation like that because I think probably what happened is this guy is going to know more than what I know, even though I'm going to be retiring sometime soon.
We, we've had some other employees, Rich, that have moved over there for a couple of weeks and decided it's not for them, so we moved them back. So...
Sure.
There's been other people that have looked at that job and we, they give me feedback and they give me input and then I decide if that's the right move for the city.
And I know at one time we talked about a half and half between water and sewer. So...
We have that. Joe's been working at the water department since we've had the vacancy. Absolutely. I wish he would have been there a little sooner, but for some reason the superintendents couldn't agree on the use of his time and shared services.
Since we're talking about all that, we have the intern for Jeff.
Not for Jeff, for the city.
Anyway, um, I was wrong when you were talking to me on the phone. That's what you told me is for him to replace you. But I want to know why we got him, but when we knew that Brian Vokel was going to leave two years prior, you said you couldn't get anybody.
Because I could not, uh, put out for hire for Brian until he actually filed for retirement. And that was sixty days before he actually retired and his retirement date was August thirteenth.
But we can get one for him and he hasn't filed for that yet.
Not for him. It is an intern. It's not like a full-time position.
Who does he work under? Jeff.
Right, because he, everybody else works under Jeff. You either work for Jeff or you work for Chief Sennett. That's how it works. And then they both work for me and they work for the council. Everybody has a boss here. That's the way it works. I said if this person works out and Jeff decides to retire, maybe want to maybe retain this person's services, it's a great time to learn about this. This person is actually here to learn about being a municipal administrator. They may or may not stay. They're going to school. It's part of what you do in the profession. I had a year-long unpaid internship to get in my profession.
I did two of them, thank you. I know how it works.
Yeah, so that's all this is. So then you should understand-
He told me on the phone that he works under him and he's doing his job for when he leaves. That is exactly what he told me on Thursday when we phoned. Did you or did you not?
I said that he is doing things alongside me, yes. So, I mean, yes, if you want to take that as... So it's typical in this profession as a city administrator to have someone come and be an intern. That's part of the program.
Nothing about it until we got an email from you stating, oh, by the way, we're going to have an, we're going to have an intern.
We have probably a lot of employees that you don't know anything about. That's not the role of council, to be the manager of the employees. So we have an administrator for that. There's things I don't know about our employees. I rely on Jeff for that. That's why we hired him. That's how it works.
It's not how it works, but, okay.
Okay, Rich, do you have anything else?
No, I will, um, if everybody could kind of look back at their budget and think of any other positions because I would like to bring this back up later on and make sure that we do have some sort of discussion on doing it before spending money on different positions. But again, that's only if the majority of the council wants to do that, not just me.
Well, under, under new business D, there is discussion of restricted budget items.
But I was told two weeks ago that I was misinformed as far as what the restricted budget items are, that we could only spend that money on those items.
So that's what municipal code defines as restricted. And I guess the other thing is, I, I don't fully, I wasn't there. So I don't know what happened. I prepared the basic ordinance that says we adopt the budget, right? But when I was looking through the budget, you guys have lots of notes, but there's no note on these items.
Jeff, on those items specifically, do you have restricted in your budget book?
They're printed in red.
And I think one of the numbers, I don't know, I, I looked at it when this first came up, but it just says restricted. It doesn't say like the addition or-
And, and I get you weren't at the budget meeting, so I understand that. And again, if we use the wrong terminology or whatever, and I'm not trying to point fingers or anything else, I'm just saying that we passed the budget hoping to understand that we wanted further discussion on those hires and it was also the purchase of some vehicles also was something that we had restricted.
And that's in red as well.
Yeah, there's two personnel items, there's a vehicle, and there might be one other item. But here's my, here's my issue, Rich, right? Here's your special meeting. The people absent from that was myself because I believe I gave you enough input and it was time for council to come to some agreement. Uh, Alderwoman, Erickson and Alderman Littlebrand weren't there, but all the discussion is all under old business. There's nothing under new business to take any action by the council that would make it binding. That's up for approval night, by the way. These are in your minutes. So maybe the process needs to be different for next year?
Probably, but-
Seems like it was discussed but not voted on.
But to me, that's pretty disappointing because then we're going back another year previous where, again, the majority of us were under the impression that we were giving a certain raise to non-contracted employees and found out later that, no, that wasn't the case. We had discussed it, but we didn't authorize it or whatever. So I kind of thought that when we discuss things at a budget meeting and we're kind of saying what we do and don't want in there, that's a discussion that's ongoing all the time. And hopefully, as we're talking about that, making our changes, those changes occur with that living document up until the time that we approve it. I wouldn't expect that that document goes back to the very original thing and all of our discussion was a waste of time. But if that's the case, then there's eight of us here for no reason.
I guess, so I will bring this up now. I would, I think everyone gets the Illinois Municipal League magazines in their boxes or to their houses. I would strongly recommend that everyone, if possible, go to IML. Because the way that the council makes decisions is you have to put them in writing. You have to legislate them. So you have to pass ordinances. You have to pass resolutions. So i- if there's things that you guys want to do, you got to talk about it and then, I guess, you know, discuss an ordinance or something along those lines. But, um, I, I think that, I just think that IML would be helpful to everyone to really understand the different, kind of the separation of powers, right? You guys are Congress, he's the president, you know, like, there are certain roles that everyone plays and I, I just would like everyone to work together. And I think IML is a really great opportunity for everyone to be able to work together. So, that's a little plug.
It kind of sounds a little bit like you're more like a strong mayor form of government you're discussing when you're making that comparison with, uh, Congress and the president. But we're, we're a city, we're, we're a city council.
It was a very loosely based, but yeah, I get what you're saying, but it, the way our code is written also, there are things, like, he can't veto things without going through a whole process. Obviously, a strong mayor, he can veto things without going through the whole process. And so we are a alderman, aldermanic type government, but the duties and obligations that are in our code are not, I don't know if they're exactly what everyone thinks that they are. So, and I'm not an expert on all the different things that every single person does. So that's where I'm saying if, if we went to IML, you know, I'll tell you right now, my plan is to go and sit in on a lot more of the positions than the attorney portions this year. So...
I plan on going this year for the first time ever.
I will see you there.
It's good because you're allowed to go. Remember, next year depends if you're up for election. You wouldn't be under my guidelines. So I think the attorney's point is, is we can all benefit from the Illinois Municipal League to be a better governing body. All right, let's move on to old business. ComEd water meter reading discussion. Anyone want to jump in there or I'll lead the conversation? So a while back, we had the company that came and recommended that we, um, jump on the ComEd water meter reading software and program. It did have a cost to it. Um, I think we can see some of the benefits of that, especially when we have leak detection and the reading requirements that will cut down the staff time and the accuracy. I, I think the next point for the council would be to see a map of where those meters actually are and then figure out what a plan might be if we decide to move forward. My concern would be, uh, the location. So I'm thinking of older homes in town, uh, that would more likely have older infrastructure, may have leaks more often. That might be a place that we might want to start. Uh, he talked that we, you know, the gentleman said that we had a lot of meters already that seemed like they were compliant. We don't, I don't know where they're at. I'd have to ask and find out. And I don't think council knows. But I think that's a starting point for us. And then if we feel like, uh, we have a good enough inventory and the cost to buy into that, I think we'd pay back over time. It wasn't in our, was not in our budget. We'd have to find the funds or make changes within that of how we want to allocate the funds, but then bring that back to council to see if we wanted to move forward with that particular type of program. It does seem like it, it takes advantage of some modern meter reading and the offset would be paying someone to go out and do that and transfer the data, have someone key that in the computer where it seems like it might be an easier upload. So is that something council would like the staff to pursue?
I would like to know if they have a recommended billing software that dovetails with this. Because we know our, our billing software, tell me, is a little old. And if with this type of readings, could it also entertain a monthly billing? Instead of doing a quarter? I mean, this sounds great that it automatically reads it three times a day. That's great, but that's almost having the hardware in place, but I want to know if there's software that dovetails that makes the whole billing process easier.
And maybe another part of dovetailing that would be, maybe we seek an outside source to do our billing. So we remove that from City Hall. That's going to free up time. It's going to free up manpower for other things that go on in City Hall. And that software might be able to do more than one or two things. Could do a percentage, could do a flat rate, could do something different for residential versus commercial.
I would like to see more, I would like to see more information if they have a, a software package that dovetails with all this.
Okay, other concerns or?
I mean, essentially what we were told is in the next five years, the readers we have are going to be obsolete. The software is going to be no more and it won't support it. So when you do the math on the meters, twenty-seven hundred meters, I believe they said we had around two hundred in town, come up to around three hundred thousand dollars. So it's three hundred thousand dollars over the next five years. We have to ask the residents to come up with money. I mean, we're having problems fixing streets, fixing anything in this town right now. To come up with three hundred thousand dollars is pretty tough. I know that, uh, Fred had talked to our superintendent about a different type of program that wasn't ComEd. And I'd like to see if we had gone anywhere with that. Maybe there could be a cost savings with those type of meters.
Fred, you got a guy? So, um, a couple of years back, I worked with Brian Vokel and they were Itron meters, um, using, utilizing the software that we currently have in-house, um, going through the different routes, right? So are there three, three different routes that are done, right? So I think, you know, over in like my area, there's a lot of centralized, uh, remote readers already in place. So the thought process is build that out a hundred percent and then utilize the technology that we currently have to read the meters ourselves and not util, not have to utilize a third party. It was about three hundred thousand dollars a year over the course of four years and we would be, we would be built out and everything would be in place. But the thing to keep in mind with this is that you have to change the meters out and that meter cost was just the actual physical meter, right? And also dependent upon the service size, those meters are going to actually increase. So that was probably the average cost. So my thought process would be is take what ComEd has put out here as a possibility, utilize information from our current meter software company and see what we could do with it and, and wage them across each other and see what the cost benefit analysis would be to go outside or keep it in, internal. What you do have with outside vendors is you have a finger pointing situation that can happen from time to time, right? So bad information gets out to them, it gets, or it comes back, it gets manipulated a little bit differently or there's a change in the system, a bill goes out. So there are complexities when you do outsourced billing. And I do know that the improvements that the staff has made in the office with the billing has tremendously improved the process. Is that not correct, Denise? Between the stuffing and the way that it's all put through. So I think what used to take maybe a day and a half is taking four hours?
I couldn't tell you what the actual time is. Probably cut in half.
At least. I mean, um, I mean, when Lisa's running bills, it's, it's not nearly as much as it used to be. I mean, it's, it's much quicker with the new folding machine and the, and the mail machine in-house because she had to sort everything by address and, I mean, it was, it was a tedious process before. So, I mean, you know, when we talk about putting this out, um, you know, and, and having somebody else do the billing, I don't think the billing is the real issue. The billing, I think we've got a relatively decent handle on. The hard part is collecting all the meter readings, making sure that we do the go-backs, make sure we figure out what the high readings are, the low readings, and why these things are happening. And that's what's taking staff time. And that is definitely with the ComEd program, that's what would help is because we would see in real time every four times a day what those readings are. Now, Don, your question about doing it every month, yes. I think that would be the goal, is that if we had new meters that are red like that, we should be able to go to a monthly billing. Or I know some cities go to a monthly for water and then a monthly for sewer to kind of spread it out. So it's every other month. But, um, you know, our sewer rate is based on our water rate, so it's probably easier just to bill it all together. So that would be the goal, but it, it's, I mean, this thing is a multi-headed monster because right now, we've got multiple ways that we have to collect data, whether it's a manual read, whether they have to go up and touch the meter, or if they can drive by and pick it up. None of them are red and, and show up on the screen. I think the biggest thing of this is that we'd be able to do some more customer service. Right now, it could be two and a half, three months before somebody knows they have a leak and then they're stuck with an eight hundred dollar bill. That's terrible customer service. They need to be able to see that in real time and know, hey, wow, this is weird. And the other thing that they said it would do is it would email staff to be able to say, hey, this one's, this one looks funky. So we can get ahold of them and be able to do that. It's about having the tools to be able to manage the system appropriately. And I think that that's really what we need to be gearing towards, is figuring out how to do that. Three hundred thousand, I think that might be a bit light. I mean, we're going to have to really crunch the numbers and look, but I-
It is a bit light because that doesn't even include the eighty thousand dollars they wanted to come to town. Because I had asked them, does that eighty thousand include any hardware at all?
No.
No, it's them coming to town for one week to show us how to use it.
Right. And, you know, on top of that-
Eighty thousand a week.
Wouldn't we all? Um, the other, the other part of it is, you know, if we're going to hire an outside crew to come in and do that, which I think is the way to do it, so we can get it done in a, in a year's time, that would be nice. It would be an expense, but that way they're making the appointments. They're coming in with crews that know how to do this. It's not if our staff members, if we've got somebody who's sick or they're off, then it delays the whole process. I think if we're going to do it, we need to commit to doing it in a short period of time, get this all up and running and then make, make sure that it's a, an appropriate way to go.
Okay, sounds like we have more questions than answers. So we can go back to the vendor as well. And I think we'll talk with our water department, any GIS mapping that we have about meter locations. And then we can come back to council and maybe update you about-
Mayor, could I make a suggestion? I know that a lot of times these things come back up on the agenda again and again. Can we, like, set a date that we're going to have it back on the agenda?
This is the first time for- This is the first time for this one, I think, coming back.
What's that?
This is the first time for this one coming back.
No, but there's been some other things that they, they, they keep going through. So instead of continuing, could, could we just say that like by the second meeting in September, come back with a report. That way we have a, a little bit of time to gather some information.
Let's say September at the latest.
And let us have the information before we have the meeting, not the day of the meeting.
Did you get something today?
We always get something.
That's not for me. Okay, I had a B discussion on the ci- transition cities water billing late fee policy.
I think it's time we bring this to light and be done with it. We need to um, figure something out tonight. Um, this keeps coming back up and we need to figure it out. So um, I'm proposing, um, if we do, if we're going to do anything, I'm proposing a ten percent instead of the twenty percent. But it's up to you guys. Right? You gotta do something.
And my opinion is, is based upon what I asked for at the last meeting was the information to be presented. That was all gathered. It was all put straight forth. The collector, city collector, gave her opinion of leaving it as it is based upon the, the numerics that were involved. Everything that's involved, the staff is currently trained. They know what the policies are. The complaints are going to be the complaints, whether they're ten percent or whether they're twenty percent, right? Um, we would have to re, redo the ordinances and everything like that. So there's an associated expense to that. So my, my vote is leave it as it is and be done with it.
The only thing that I wanted to add was possibly putting a cap on a late fee because I don't want to lose any businesses. And their late fees are a lot. You know, when you have anywhere from five hundred to three thousand dollars in a late fee. You know, we can't afford to lose any business, but maybe a cap of five hundred, a thousand, something, you know, where, if we're able to do that.
And I can tell you that the, the one late fee that was on here, um, talked with the owners of that company when it first came out and he says it will never happen again and it has not happened since. It was a fluke with the mail. It was a fluke with how everything came through, but now there's stopgaps put into place by them to ensure that doesn't happen again. Those companies are more than able to do that themselves. They choose not to.
Right, okay.
So-
Well, and also maybe just-
They're for-profit industries.
Right.
And they just need to know how to manage their, their bills better.
Well, and I agree, you know, all around. And I think maybe if we can put something on a water bill, you know, if there is someone out there that does not know, you can still stop in every month and hand them a hundred bucks or every couple of weeks, you know? So if they're aware that you can, you don't have, just have to wait till the due date, you can come in every month, you know, if they can't make the payment.
Also, I would like to put out there, we do know, we do know we have mail issues. I know there's nothing in writing in the ordinance. There's nothing in writing anywhere as far as uh, one-time forgiveness. We were able to see on here and I looked at documentation from Denise. We can see their bills. We can see when they paid, if they paid late. I would like to see a one-time forgiveness put on there for our residents. Because if they did get the mail late, it's not their fault. They can't pay something they haven't gotten.
I would also suggest for that forgiveness too, that it, go back to when we first went to that twenty percent because the information that I had looked at, I mean, some people are the habitual offenders. They were the habitual offenders when it was only a five dollar late charge. When it went to twenty percent, they've been an offender once, maybe twice. And I think the second time was because they're waiting for a response from the council on complaints that they made. I do agree though, that it wouldn't be fair for, you know, waiving up for someone when another person had already paid a couple of hundred bucks or in some cases, a couple of thousand dollars for a thing, but I, I think there needs to be a happy medium. I understand that there's only a few people that are complaining about it, but I think there's only a few people that are um, well, I shouldn't say going to be habitually. You said you sent out two hundred and nine late notices or whatever the case was, right? Just for that one section?
Right.
So, I mean-
I have a little bit of a problem with the one-time forgiveness only because, I mean, it sounds good, kind of makes sense. But what of all the residents who paid the late fee have never complained and just paid it? Right? It's not fair to them that we're going to be offering that. That's my opinion.
Okay, so we haven't heard from Alderman Ketchum or Alderman Chun?
I'm not putting you on the spot. I was just saying I'm looking for- I, I do have to say, I mean, me personally, I put my, I put it in the calendar on my phone to give myself a couple of days' notice to when it's due. Um, I understand the mail isn't always accurate or on time, you know, things get lost, but in that, that being said, it's also the, there is an element of personal responsibility with it also. I mean, yeah, there, there are people who are new to their houses and, and may not know what the schedule is for what they, for when their billing might be at the beginning, but you get to know it and it's, it's not like it's a, you know, it, it's not like it's something that changes dates or moves around. It's pretty much the same, you know, three months you, you have to pay the bill. Um, so yeah, I, 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 I completely understand what you're saying with the one-time forgiveness, but also in the same, there's got to be some personal responsibility.
Alderman Chun?
I think we just keep it the same, especially if we're looking at doing different readings and everything like that. I think we're, we're losing money as a city is because of the meters themselves, because there might be some older homes where these older meters aren't working right. But we're already losing money on that. So I think if we just keep it the same, just for now, and figure out what we're going to do with all these meters and everything like that. And how we're going to do the billing monthly and all that. Just leave it. Leave it for now.
Okay, I did not hear a consensus. That sounded like leave it the way it is. Okay? All right, I assume that we put that to rest. Right, item C, discussion of EV charging stations.
Um, I had these put back on because I personally have talked to a couple of people. Um, and I believe that we all know things aren't for free. They're not. So we, obviously they bring these to Sandwich. They're saying it's free, it's free, it's free. We, we pay for the software. We're going to have to eventually pay for the upkeep for them. Um, I don't understand why the library would want one. I mean, I don't feel like we get enough people there for EV charging station. Um, but um, I just think that we need to read between the lines on this. I really do. I don't think we have enough to do this with. And I think that we are possibly given some wrong information on this. So that's why I wanted to bring it back to the council.
Well, we haven't seen any numbers of what other cities generate and what we could possibly be left on the hook. If I remember right, all we did was agree to raise our hands, say, hey, we're interested, but that's it.
That's what I'm hoping we did.
And then we got no other information to go along with this.
Right.
Actually, I believe you unanimously, unanimously passed the agreement.
Oh, it wasn't unanimously, but um, we did, they did pass something. But I do believe, like you said, is we haven't gotten any other information on it or anything like that. So I think that's where we need to have clarification.
I personally want to see roughly what kind of income could be possible generated from those. Last thing I do is want us to be on the hook for any of it.
Well, I guess I have two things. I am ninety percent sure that the motion was made to authorize and have, approve of the agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. So we're at a point, I'll have to look, but we're at a point here where we may be looking at being in breach of an agreement. Um, so I have to look into that and confirm that. Um, but I think-
So it's under item D. In your minutes, you're approving tonight, curbside EV ready, make-ready pilot program. I requested that you approve the installation of EV stations in the business district. There is a motion by Alderwoman Inman to authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents, seconded by Alderman Crimebrink, and it passed eight to zero. At that point, then I signed the document.
I'm not asking for it to be rescinded. I'm just saying that we need to think about this.
I, and I think my understanding was that the council had said that what they wanted to make sure that they approved of was the final locations and it was, it was confirmed or I guess relayed that no final locations would be made until council had that information and approved of that. So I think that's still the case and I don't know if there's anything more, but that is what I believe. Don, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, me and Mr. Alexi went out and took a look at a couple of locations. And from there, it was up to him to continue to work with locations and bring it back to council.
And I don't think we're there yet, but-
Correct. Hi, Don. Was it on?
All right. So in your packet last week or two weeks ago, everything was in there about cost. There is no cost to us. Uh, we had, I don't know, we had about twelve people from ComEd, the designer, their engineers, and I had Nick go with me on the walk-around. One of the things that comes up is these are powerful units and they need a separate circuit. And ComEd wants to come from one of their transformers. So we, Nick and I agreed unanimously overwhelmingly that we don't want them trenching our streets, right? We don't want to trench. Because we're having a hard enough time protecting our streets, we don't need to weaken them. So we came to a location over here on the west side, west side of Pearl. And the first two spots, um, south of the alley. Transformers right upstairs. They can come right down. No trenching in the street. Streets are good. So in doing that, you got a, you get two spots, one charger can charge two cars, you get two spots, one's a regular spot, one's a handicap spot. They talked to Nick at length about, hey, there's a problem with the curb and you can see the, the road's in bad shape. They're really going to, they're going to rebuild it, repitch it and recurve it. And I just got this stuff this morning from their design. I'll pass it on to uh, Nick and Kurt. But I think that's the most safe place for us to put it as far as doing damage to our city streets.
Don, I think there was a question about is there a software cost to maintain the software?
Well, we talked about a maintenance cost. We talked about a couple hundred bucks a year was on your charts. Uh, to maintain the software, keep it updated, turning. We may also want to look at some sort of maintenance on the units themselves, but as we know more, I know we get one, one-year warranty on the units, so that second time might fall off, uh, might fall off. The other thing when I look is our insurance, car backs into one. You know, are we covered? Can we get it back up and running? It's us and Oswego and Dixon are the first ones in and then they got twelve more behind us.
So you can get numbers from Oswego and Dixon on what they're-
Well, no, they're in the same spot. We are. We're all in the first ones in. I've done this before.
So we don't have a cost for what this could generate as far as covering these costs?
Well, remember, we keep all the credit card money, right? And then we pay for the electric. It'll be a separate circuit. I'll monitor it. Um, they teach us how to set the rates and how to have a profit. That's a whole seminar I go to for four hours. Um, and then when I get, understand all that, I'll come back to Jeff and I'll come back to the mayor and say, oh, where do we want to put it in the range? Uh, they also supplying signage out on Church Street to come on in in separate spots in downtown, pointing out to where it's at.
I mean, ultimately, it was eleven hundred a year for the smaller slow charging unit and wasn't it fifteen hundred dollars a year for the larger quick charging unit?
It could be. Those are just, those are numbers that come from um, US Department of Energy. We'll see when we get to them. And we got to work through all that, but there's no, there's no expense. I don't know where this comes up after all this stuff and walking through it again, but um, there's also a chance to make some good money.
Right, but for us as city council, we don't want the residents of Sanders to hear there's absolutely no cost when at the last meeting, it's bare minimum twenty-six hundred dollars a year if we get one small unit and one large unit.
But we keep the revenue to pay for it.
I understand, but they still need to know that it's twenty-six hundred dollars a year. They don't know how much revenue they're going to get out of it.
Nothing's free in life.
Well, if you don't want to do the maintenance, we can ignore the maintenance. I don't know what we'll do with the software then.
Oh, we're, we're just trying to set expectations for the residents. That's it. And we're still getting charged for the power. That's a separate bill, right? The power used at that station. Is that what you said?
The car that plugs in, pays for, puts his credit card, cannot get it unless he puts the credit card in, plugs it in.
Don's asking, do we get a ComEd bill for the-
Yeah, we'll get a separate. I want, they asked if they wanted it on um, one of our existing. I said, no, I want an absolute separate account for accounting. It's a lot easier.
So I told you, I don't have an electric car, so this doesn't impact me. I do know when I picked my wife up at Kohl's on Sunday, lady across the street unplugged her car, put it back up and drove off after she was done shopping.
Yeah, I, I think they're a little more common than we think. There's just not, there's just not a lot out there and that's what this program's about. And they're also being supported by state money too on this. That's how, how it came to be uh, no cost at all. There's a lot of work in this. I mean, you're talking about over probably over a hundred thousand dollars by redoing that street and the unit cost and putting it all back together.
So my understanding from our motion was is Don will bring back the proposed locational locations. Council will approve it and then they will identify the installation place. Okay. Rich, you still got your old truck like I do? Mine doesn't take electric. All right. Okay, uh, item D is discussion of professional service agreement with EEI to provide GIS support.
Jeff? So I did go out and talk to um, Brad Eady regarding the GIS system. And he says unfortunately, it's a necessary evil because our GIS system is only a few months old. And EEI would actually come in and help them learn the system. Software, show them how to record stuff, show them how to delete older stuff and help our superintendents start building our GIS system. That was the way it was explained to me.
Essentially, it's a continuation of, and like you said, necessary evil, it's, I mean, it's kind of the way, something yearly. It's a maintenance. It's keeping up the system and making sure that current staff, new staff, all understand it, how to use it, how to implement new things. Um, and we're going to teach them, you know, how to fish essentially, you know? We don't want to catch the fish for them. We want to teach them how to fish. So helping them through as much of those things, but there are some certain things that, that are a little more higher powered. That are a little easier for a GIS expert to do.
Fred? You probably use GIS probably more than anybody here.
Yeah, um, I mean, the thing is, is all the new development that's going in, that's all going to be populated in the base map. All the upgrades that take place will go into the base maps. You can even put easement documentations into it. You can put the locations of your meters onto that so that it's all, all out there with the meter numbers, identify it queryable. You can put the date ranges on them. So if you have a problem with a meter set that maybe was manufactured within a specific time slot, you know exactly where, where it's at out in the field. So there are many benefits to having this and it, this has been slowly growing. It's something Tom Horick had been working on when he was here. Um, and it took a while to get momentum and it's finally moving in the right direction. So um, necessary evil, I think it's a necessity, not necessarily an evil.
Yeah.
Kurt, do we?
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, do we currently layer our mapping for the GIS system of all the different elements you can place into a map schedule?
You're talking like waters, sewer?
Yes, storm, all that. Are we currently layering it though? All of our employees know how to do that?
That's what we're working with.
That's a part of it.
Yes.
Rich?
We're miles from where we were six months ago. Six months ago, the guys were out in the field with a PDF file on an I, on their phone, trying to figure out what was what as far as where water and sewer lines ran. Now, we've got the same thing. They could be on the phone, but it's, it's live. It's been updated the last time we did something. And that's part of this is to make sure that we're getting the, the stuff updated and going. I mean, Tom had done a lot of different things. Tom Horick, it was a matter of trying to make sure that we had that information and then bringing it back up. And that's really what we've done.
Upload a data file. With Tom though, it always was like an Excel.
But I thought we were doing something a little bit more live because we were with DeKalb County GIS.
We still had to request it from them, like they still controlled our data.
Their data is very minimalistic compared to what this powerful tool is too.
That's what we found out as we were going through the process.
And just so you know, DeKalb County, and we asked about that from them, they don't want anything to do with it. They don't want to bother. They don't have the manpower to handle it. They don't have the manpower to manage it. They do the little bitty things that they do with uh, the, essentially your, your maps that you have for your, for your properties. And we coordinate with them. That's part of the fee that we have with them. It's a very small fee. And we coordinate with them and we pull that stuff in and coordinate. So it's always on their system. But all the internal stuff that we have with the sewer, the water and the- But all the internal stuff that we have with the sewer, the water, and the storms, and you start getting into things like crazy stuff, like your easements, and your, um, valve turning schedules, and when a fire hydrant was replaced, and you can start getting all these pieces of information slowly in there. It's very powerful, it just takes time. I mean, you want like three or four fields on, like, say, a manhole, for instance, you could have 20 fields, but the problem is, is it just takes a lot of time to get all the information in there.
And I just wanted to ask.
And teaching everybody about it.
Sorry, I, I just wanted to ask, just to make sure that we were at least using that information that we had already obtained or had before.
Yes.
And it wasn't just put off to the side and then start from scratch again.
No, we were not starting from scratch, we used everything we had already, and we took everything we possibly could use, there was no, we didn't go backwards anywhere. We added on, improved, expanded, and have now made everything very clean across the board, and now giving the staff the tools with those phones, PDAs, whatever they're gonna be using, and eventually getting a GPS stick, so they can go out there and locate things within a few inches, you know?
Rich, I'm hoping that'll help us with our inventory, and when we do a capital plan, we can just identify, you know, older infrastructure that we want to get a cost estimate for.
Oh, absolutely, because what I remember was like the different sized water lines and sewer lines and stuff, knowing what connected to what, and where it was.
You're gonna know where your valves are located, you're gonna know where your inlets are for your catch basins and everything like that.
Even like all the B boxes and all that stuff.
Yeah, exactly. You'll also be able to take, take the pavement improvement schedule that's been done, and it'll have overlay over the geographic location, and you can put how, how much area was covered, and all that fun stuff. It's, it's a very powerful tool, so.
It should be helpful to us.
The, the, DeKalb County was always very helpful, right? It just took a little bit longer, and there was a, an issue trying to get all the departments on the same platform in order to get that information to them, and then back and proofed. So now, doing it in-house and having EEI directly involved is gonna take that out of the equation.
Okay, so that was on old business, there's no action for that?
It's, we're just, it's coming up in the regular meeting, just author, authorizing to sign the, the public.
What was the cost for that?
Fifty. Fifty-six eighty-six, $5,686. It is a T and M budget, so it's essentially for the next, you know, year, or it could be essentially until it's used up, which could last more than a year. The goal is, like I said, to teach the employees how to do the low-level things that are easy enough for the staff to do themselves, and improve the system themselves, teaching them how to do it. And when it comes to the more difficult things, like, oh, we're gonna set up a whole brand-new layer system on there, because we're gonna add B boxes in here, or we're gonna add, whatever we're gonna add, then we'll step in and spend the few hours we need to spend to get that done.
Okay, other questions or comments from council?
Okay, moving on to new discussion, item A is discussion of the treasurer duties.
Yes, I ask this to be on the agenda, you all should have it in your packet, defining, uh, the duties and the requirements of the treasurer to do her job, not only for the current treasurer, and for moving forward for any other treasurer. Moving, moving forward. Uh, it's on there for council review. And any input or changes or comments should be looked at.
This is what he gave us, and I started to refer to it. Yeah. And, just a general statement, we need to go through our code and make the changes in our code. And, um, some of those things, again, our code says are handled by the clerk or by the collector, so we'd have to modify our code to change that. So.
I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I'm just saying that it's not, th- this is not an ordinance that you can pass. We need to pass an ordinance amending our code to do, I guess, whatever it is you guys wanted to do, but, um, and I guess Denise said that she started going through it, kind of referencing the provisions of the code, so that is just, I don't know who wants to do that, I guess I can do that, but up to the council.
So you're talking like, there could be 50 to 100 changes in the code in order to make?
I mean, it could be a lot, like I said at the last meeting, what we have found is that our code has, I guess the best example is like to keep the accounts, right? The Illinois Municipal Code says the treasurer shall keep the accounts, and then it says a bunch of mumbo jumbo, and then at the end it says, however, municipality may designate so, an alternate person or someone else to handle this function. Our code designates, I don't know if, honestly, I can't think of right now if it's the clerk or the collector that maintains the accounts, but it's one of them. So that provision, we'll have to change that from the clerk or collector's role, and then we would have to change the ordinance for the treasurer saying, you know, what the treasurer's duties would be. So it would be a pretty big overhaul of the clerk's duties, collector's duties, and the treasurer's duties in your code.
Okay. The resident voted to have a treasurer, so let's just, uh, get it in place and get it done right.
I guess I need some consensus from the entire council if we want to take on that project.
Well, I mean, essentially, at last council, um, treasurer was asking to see certain reports, any of these reports are foillable anyways, and to have two sets of eyes looking at our finance, it really doesn't hurt. I mean, anybody out here can foil it, everything she's asking for. So if we have a treasurer that's asking to see financial reports, I don't see reason why we couldn't give it to her and let her see the financial reports.
And I guess I, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't part of that, but I think that the issue was the manner in which they were requested.
Yeah, and, you know, this is a learning curve for all of us, right? We, we had, when I first got on the treasurer, what was it, it was a report on the current CD status.
Yep.
Right? And then what happened? They all got messed up, and Denise had to take it over, right? Over a period of time, I mean, because there was a vacancy, right? So she had left, and then nobody was taking care of it, and then Denise had to straighten it all out. So then it became a, a responsibility for Denise, and then we had a gap with no treasurer at all, and then we appointed a treasurer, and things were going smooth, and then a person left. So, this is a learning curve, I think once we all get on the same page of what Sandra needs, and what she wants to have to do a check and a balance, I think we're gonna be in a heck of a position. You know? I do think that there's a, there's a fear in my mind with not having somebody that's on the payroll here looking at stuff, because we have, we have a tangible person. Denise is our tangible person that is on the payroll to make sure that it's right, then we also have another tangible person on the payroll to make sure that it's right, you know, with, uh, um.
Angie.
Angie, and then the third check and balance is, uh, Jeff, and the fourth check and balance on that is Wes with Lauderbach. So we have all those things, and then we have Sandra, right? So we have all those things built into that process. When we have an opportunity where it's a elected position, you have an opportunity for somebody not to fully understand their duties and responsibilities, maybe not do it full, fulfill those obligations. I don't think we're gonna have an issue here, but what if she decides this is too much for her and doesn't want to do it, right? You change the code, you do all that, and then we don't have a person in there, then you're back to changing the code again potentially, so. Sorry, you, you walked out, we were talking about you, but if, if you get what, if you get what you need, do you think you're gonna be in a good position?
Yes.
Okay, so, like, not have to modify anything with, with a code, I mean, like I said, this is a learning curve for everybody.
There's, for, for what I'm being allowed to do, oversight and checking things out and finding where we can, in my opinion, cut, change, re-code some of these things that are misappropriately coded, um, it would save money. It may not save hundreds of thousands of dollars, but no, I do not want to do the stocks and bonds and go to the bank and collect the money, and I am getting paid like nothing, which is fine, because I knew that prior to taking this job, but I enjoy doing this, and it's the same thing I've been doing too, and I'm sorry, I just found out my godfather had a stroke, so, that's why I left. That's why I'm doing the things I do for Sandwich, that's why I've been doing the things I do for Sandwich, whether I'm getting paid or not. But a little bit more, um, transparency to the numbers, a little more, um, working with me to build what I need to build, to be able to put out what Angela puts out now, and says, calls it a treasurer's report, is false, it's not a treasurer's report. It is a financial, whatever her title is, report, and she gets paid enough to do that, I don't know who helps her compile that, um, and that's fine. But I find errors every time I look at a piece of paper for Sandwich. They're not saying they're huge, I'm not saying anything bad, but if I get what I had talked to a few of the aldermen about, where I can financially go or not. If I can continue to go and get the documents that I need, I can fine-line it to where I can give a good report, and a good financially sound advice without the title of the accountant, or Angela, or Michelle, they do great jobs, but they do it with what they are given. They don't go back through each account like I do every month. They don't go back through every bill like I do every month. I question everything, it's sometimes very hard, this last three weeks I have really fallen down, because I've had bad things happen, but everybody here has had something happen that has taken them away from their job, I guess. I think I can do good work, I wouldn't have ran if I didn't think I could, and help you guys make more informed decisions on where the finances are going. I know I answer to any of them that call me and talk on the phone, I'll go down the rabbit hole and tell them exactly where it is, or I'll go find it. And say, this is where we're at, this is what we're doing. I write pages and pages of notes on what we spend every month. We are way out of control, way out of control on spending, and there's ways that it can be fixed. But it takes more than me being in this position for two months to come up with a complete financial overview of what I feel is correct, especially when I ask for PDF and I get this, a copy of a copy of a copy. I can't do nothing with that when the code numbers are all wrong. I can't do anything when I get a piece of paper, and it's got three initials at the top, and then insufficient information or wrong line information. That's all I am asking for. I don't go in and harass anybody, I typically ask Jeff for the stuff, or I'll send an email to Denise if I think she has it. Angie emails me and tells me, here's these, but I have to be able to see what, I have to be able to see what it's, what's missing to fix it. And I don't want the keys to this city, it's too messed up for me, I got enough problems on my hands without, y'all got your hands full. But I promised that I would do my best to financially look at every avenue and where we can cut corners and, and save money, and that's what I'm gonna continue to do.
I appreciate that, so going back to my, my original question.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, I, I think we needed that dialogue, so, going back to the question, if, if we get, if the city staff gets you the documents that you need in the format that you need it to make an informed decision, there shouldn't be any issues, correct?
Absolutely no problem.
Good.
On a regular basis.
On a, yeah, on a regular basis.
We're gonna have to put a cycle together, right?
Exactly.
And so, like, I don't know how that will all work, because it's gonna be hard to have what is coming from, like, Angie's report on there.
Well, we're getting into kind of a swing of things of when, what, how, they gave me a calendar of when they do this.
It'll come together.
And we just need to get the correct documents to be able to compile the right outcome.
Perfect.
Okay, I would point out too, that when Alder Mandell became our treasurer, it was during his time as treasurer that we developed and passed the one balance policy, so he also looked at things, uh, from a policy perspective, so. Okay, any other comments for treasurer duties? Okay, item B is discussion of craft fair under the Big Top in cooperation with Betty Erickson Foundation.
Okay, can I have them come up and talk?
No, it's only under public comment.
I'm sorry?
Only under public comment, that's what I have her for, your sister?
Can I personally say that I love the idea due to the fact that 29 years, her mother had the fair, the craft fair downtown, and the fact that they want to continue around in their mother's name, I think it's a wonderful thing. That's my personal opinion.
All right, I'm gonna just throw it out there. So, I had a meeting with, I got a Don Danko, I'm sorry, not Don Danko, Don Alessi, and Jeff let me know that other people didn't want to take it over in the city or in anywhere else. And so I said, I would gladly do this. So I said, can we have a meeting? Absolutely, had a meeting. And, um, was told, can't believe you're doing this, this is great, great work, 30 years, mom did really good. So, started looking into a foundation we can do for her. Looked into insurance, looked into website, we looked into everything, getting a tent, because apparently there's a tent problem, can't get a tent here. So, um, even mentioned about possibly doing something on Friday with tents, because they used to always be here till Monday. Everybody was great, both Don and Jeff were like, this is a great idea, we'll let the mayor know, go, good job. Okay. Literally had everything in place to go forward, and I get an email from the mayor, that is like, um, this was after our last meeting. We had our meeting on Monday, on Thursday I get an email stating, I think, no, maybe it was Friday, stating, um, the city is taking it over. What? The city has never been involved in the craft fair under the Big, Big Top, never. And, so therefore, I believe it's an overstep. I know he's gonna say the big word liability. He never asked me what I had, what I was trying to get, I never have gotten the foundation set up yet, I mean, it's set up, we haven't gotten paid for it, because he gave me that email. That's a lot of money to set up a foundation. I'm not gonna put in that money for him to try and tell me no to it, or the council if you say no to it, then I won't get it, but I can't get that money back. So going forth is, I believe, just like I have spoke to almost every single one of you individually, I believe we should still be able to take this on without the city getting involved. Also, somebody asked me how much money is usually made, how much money would the city be losing out on? Almost nothing. My mom didn't do this for the money, she did it to bring people to Sandwich. You get onto any business when this craft fair is here, and they will be like, thank you, thank you for bringing this to town. Every business here, you know, they own a business, uh, they're packed, packed for eating, Prinney's is always packed. I just don't understand how you'd want to take away from bringing all this in and saying that Sandwich can do this, when Don told me he has no time, because he's doing the taste. So I don't know who's gonna put this craft fair on, but it's gonna be a flop if it's not the Betty Erickson Foundation.
Okay, so let me tell you my side of the story. So I was at Betty's visitation, and Karst had mentioned that the family liked to name it after her mother, which I thought was a great idea, she was a wonderful lady, I had no problem with that. And then you mentioned that you'd like to take it over, and I said, that was a conversation with Don and Jeff, our economic developer.
You actually did say, I can make that happen, those were your exact words?
The name change.
No, the, okay.
So, at that time, though, this was ran by the Fox Valley Community Center.
No. It was not run by them, it was run by my mom, they sponsored it.
Your mom might have ran it, but that's who it was under, because they had the insurance, they have the liability, they had everything that would.
They did not have any insurance on that.
They have insurance as an organization.
As an organization, but not a writer insurance or anything like that, that you keep telling me I have to have.
I didn't tell you that, so I sent you an email, and just said, I think it's the best way to start, the city take this event and run the event, right? We already do the taste, there's an expense to the tent itself.
That was half and half with, with Betty, she paid half of it.
Yep, our current estimate's about $8,000. Yep, our current estimate's about $8,000.
And just to let you know, the taste was not a city event originally. It was also a SAM event, which was this Sandwich Association Emergence, which is now the Chamber. So it was not a city event.
Actually, those are two different organizations because I belong to SAM because I was a business owner.
I know.
And I know how it runs.
And I know, and it was.
They were different. They weren't the same organization.
It was, it was run by SAM.
They weren't the.
Yes, it was.
It was run by SAM, but they're not the same organization. So I sent you an email and I asked you, I didn't question your intentions, but I wanted to know who was running it because in the meantime, I had reached out to the senior center and asked them if they were still being involved. They told me that the director herself told me that they decided and that includes their board, they weren't going to be involved with it anymore. So my question for you was, are you in a position that we could do business with as a city? The city typically does business with not-for-profits, other businesses that have the insurance in place that we would partner. We don't partner with individuals. We do not. I can't, they have anybody that we've partnered with. You say it's a foundation, but a foundation isn't set up. And I told you in my email, I said on two of them. I said on a state foundation, I said on the local park district. Understand how foundations work. The problem is, is you said there's a foundation, but there's not a foundation until it's granted by the government, right? That's articles of incorporation, bylaws identify how you operate and who's in charge of the
Process.
of the foundation, your IRS tax status and filing, your proof of legal entity and representation, ability to have insurance and a certificate of insurance, and that you can, that someone is actually allowed to enter into an agreement or represent the organization. Now you say you have all those things, but you don't. So yes, I'm the mayor. I always look at the liability of the city. That's part of risk management that someone does, right? Jeff does the same thing. Anytime we enter into some kind of agreement, we have to make sure that the city is protected. That is our ultimate responsibility as a city. So again, I don't question naming it after your mother. She's a wonderful lady. You know I've said that about her. The issue is, is whether or not this is in the best interest of the city. And if it's not for someone else to take over, then either the city has two choices in my opinion. Run it or stop it. Those are the choices.
And why did you wait a month, a month, to give me an email?
Because I found out about 10 days ago from our staff that the senior center was not going to be involved. The next logical step for me is to ask them, is that indeed the case? Because I do not want to exclude them if they still want to be involved in the craft fair. They got back to me a couple of days later and that was most recently when I found out that they may not be a part of this.
Because I was told in the meeting with Jeff and Don that Jeff would loop you in. So I don't know why you only just found out about it 10 days ago.
So that's my view of it.
I have a question. So in when we did the ComEd Waterway thing, there were people that are part of that group that came up and gave their display. They had comments. If they have other people that are working with and towards the foundation here, as a council, can we not hear their comments regarding the either creation or whatever having to do with this foundation? I think us hearing the comments regarding that would help.
I have Chris to sign up to speak under public comment. That's where she asked to make her comments. It should be coming up shortly.
Colton did too.
Yeah, and I'll go on the record that if we, if the foundation is established and has the insurances and everything, I say it's a great thing. Let's, let's let it happen. I guess another option would be, would it not be mayor if another business were to absorb this and take it on and have all, have all the riders that are required?
I'm playing with that too. We just need someone that has the.
So if another business took it on, they could still keep the name, they could still make it all happen, have the insurance and not worry about the foundation this year potentially, then get everything in motion for next year to take it over as, as a foundation?
Possibly. That'd be up to council to decide.
I mean, cause ultimately it comes down to, you guys already have the vendor list. You already have the contacts for all the craft people that would like to come to it and have been to it. Does the city have any of that?
Does that make it right though? What's that? Does that make it right that somebody has the contact?
I'm not asking, I'm trying to get answers for the questions I have. So I didn't, I'm not asking right or wrong. I'm asking if the city even has any of that. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I don't think the city's been directed to move forward on it because we don't know what council wanted to do. My understanding was is we had to have a discussion about this. So everything's on hold. Again, it comes down to protecting the city. Somebody falls, trips, gets hurt, what are they gonna come after? The city.
Regardless if we had insurance or not, they'd still come after the city.
And I'm just gonna add, that's where there needs to be an agreement between the city and whoever's gonna run it about how that's gonna be managed.
Well, I'm assuming that we already do that with anytime we do a street closure then?
You were mayor, did we?
No, I'm.
At one time?
I'm asking.
We typically let businesses just run it under the business.
I did not.
It's just a street closure.
We, we just had one this weekend.
Yes.
With an organization.
Yes.
I don't know if they're a.
Benevolent. They're a not-for-profit.
Okay. So I'm assuming that they have insurance or whatever, or had insurance.
Is it not for profit?
I, I don't know. I'm assuming they are.
I guess I don't know what's part of the application or anything like that. I.
They've been doing it for like nine years.
And, and I'm, I'm just curious because all, all we're talking about basically is street closure and being on city property.
Right. Just like a food vendor or anybody else, right?
Correct. Right. So I, I don't think the city, I mean, put it this way, we haven't done Freedom Days in years. We barely got through putting on the Sesquicentennial, you know, several years ago because of volunteers and everything else. I mean, there's, there's groups that you're losing your volunteers and people that are doing things mostly because they get older or in this case because they passed. And again, I, I wouldn't think under any circumstances the city would be able to undertake this. I could be wrong. It would be great if we could, but I think that's why, you know, we lost our Freedom Days or didn't have any more. We didn't have the volunteers. We didn't have the manpower to do things like that. We've talked and it's a great idea for how many years, having those tents up because of the taste of Sandwich. And yes, it would be awesome to use the tents the rest of the weekend because they just sit there empty. And it could have been a revenue generating thing or just a great thing for the city. We talked about an Oktoberfest. We've talked about other things. Really, Sesquicentennial was the last time that we were able to keep tents and do stuff like that, have bands, have a local bar, you know, sponsor a beer garden or something like that. But that's a lot of work and that's a lot of responsibility to them. And then they gotta figure out, well, you know, how are they doing it? Are they making a donation to the whatever organization it is? Are they keeping all the profits? I mean, they're paying staff to work it. They're, you know, doing whatever. I mean, just like the street dances and everything. I'm assuming anytime that happened, you know, it was on that business's insurance on their rider because we're serving alcohol on the city street and the roads closed. But when the roads closed, the roads closed. There shouldn't be any traffic on the road while it's going on. So I don't know. I, if it can stay in the family, I would think that's the, the best thing. But I, I would have no clue as far as to how to go about doing that. And I think when I was on the council originally, I think SAM was still an organization and then it switched to something else. And, but then that group ended too.
All I can tell you is, is when August Rick Olson walked into my office and said, here's an envelope full of cash. You have to take over the Taste of Sandwich. And Betty said the same thing. We got that in August and we ran it in September. We called everybody that was on the list last year, gave them a form and fell out and we made money that year. And we reinvested the city. It's still in our funds to do other things for our downtown.
How much money are we even talking here? What did, what did you pull in last year?
Less than $2,000.
How much?
Less than $2,000. That's why she didn't do it for the money. She did it to bring income into the town.
Same ti, same time that the big craft show is going on out at the.
Yes.
Fairground. Fair, right?
Yes.
And that money was also then to take care of advertising and stuff like that for the next go around. It wasn't like it was sitting in the bank and making, making money. It was the, it was your seed money for the next year.
And for this foundation, if it got to go, we had it planned that we would be taking, let's just say we made $2,000, we take some of that money and get with IVBC and give nursing scholarships. Or if there was nobody in the nursing program that went over there that was gonna go on, we do it for the EMS. Somebody like that, she would be ecstatic for that. And if there's anything left over with that foundation, we would put it into a fund to help the elderly in town, whether they needed a fence painted or a stairway, you know, put in or something. We'd find somebody and we'd do a program for that. So, you know, I mean, it's not like we were gonna run with $2,000 and, you know, make a break for it. We're gonna put that to good use for the town. And I, I think this is just absolute disgrace that we even have to be discussing this. I really do. I haven't, I have quotes for the insurance, everything that we need. And I'm not talking $100,000. I'm talking million dollars worth of insurance I have. I mean, I, I went all out for it. It's not like I was just like, oh, I'll just get $100 or something. No, I went all out for it. I'm not paying all that though, if I'm not gonna be able to do anything. So when you say that I said it, there was a foundation, there is a foundation that is being set up. I never said it was already set up. So all your looking and stuff was, yes, a failure because there wasn't one set up yet.
I do the same research if somebody wants to come to town and buy a establishment too. I'd like to see what their background is, their liquor license, where they hold another business. All right, anyone else? Okay, moving on to see the Dearborn property. So we realized a while back in regards to the Spring Shopping Center that there was a easement issue out there that would resolve a couple of issues with about three properties that would allow us to further develop them. And so one of the issues is, is there's a lot of private spaces out there. What we would propose to council is, is that we go in as a city and obtain the easement. The easement then allows it to have sewer services brought to those properties and for it to be further developed. We believe that without that, it's impeding our development out there from comments we've had, some, some of the current landowners. So I don't know, Don, you wanna come up? And Kurt, you certainly know about it, but it's an $8,500 process to identify the easement so that we could secure it on behalf of the city. We don't feel that either the three parties are in a position to secure it because there's other people that would be involved. And this is a chance for us to move forward and try to develop the rest of the shopping center out there.
And I guess, I just wanna, I know we've talked about easement, but don't we actually want fee simple to this property?
Say that again?
Don't we want fee simple ownership of this property that we're talking about?
I think.
Like, don't we want it as a right of way?
Yes, I think that would be best.
Okay. I was just, cause that's what I prepared. So, okay. Sorry.
So mayor, about 10 months ago, maybe 11 months ago, you, I and Jeff were called to a meeting by, to BEI's offices. They're the owner of that property and they revealed to us their plans for the future. And the plans for the future involve 10 additional commercial lots. When they bought that property, you know, they inherited the McDonald's where it was. And what we all didn't know, but they did, was that Midland Bank is still on a septic system. And that septic field is BEI's first lot right along the entrance there. That's a prime lot.
Right on 34. Where the ice machine is.
Yeah. And they're getting a lot of inquiries and they're, they've got two very serious inquiries. We were unaware of that, so we started putting this plan together last fall. Then a third party came that wanted to develop along that corridor. And we thought, okay, we have two other people now helping us pay for it. And then that second party, landowner and the second party couldn't come to a final agreement. In the last couple of weeks now, we've had another party come to us about that same spot and has in writing said they'll participate. So that's what got us going again. So BEI has stuck that, that sewer line that is in the south, southeast corner of Dearborn's property. That's the, that's the last manhole where the line stops. And we need to bring that back west, parallel to that driveway behind Midland roughly. Kurt's asked for it to be 20 feet wide. They've agreed. And then that connection would continue to cover the other 10 lots. We have water up on 34. We have water and sewer on Griswold, but we don't have water that would service the design down the center or sewer to service the design down center. Midland is willing to go through the expense, come off the septic system, correct the field to whatever Kendall County Health Department needs for them to do and turn that back over to a, develop a lot to BEI. So Midland's in with some expenses, we're in with some expenses. BEI has volunteered to be partners and this third party that's just shown up has agreed.
So I, I think our concern, right, crap me down, is Dearborn, right? They have the cafe. They seem to be ready, able and willing.
Yeah.
Business to grant us the easement. We're not sure how that would work with some other owner in time.
Right.
But BEI's been very clear that if we can't remove this first obstacle, then we'll just sit on their property for now. So it seems like they want the front to put that anchor type of business in there. And then with the anticipation of the rest of their lots, they're developing. Their lots go from where the bank is all the way over south and west of McDonald's. So that's the potential for that whole development area.
And Mr. Dearborn, I had a meeting with him with an hour and a half, telling me the history of his businesses in the area. He's all in, you know, he just wants some specific answers. What's it look like? How much size? And Kurt did some diagrams. We sent it all to his attorney and all I think we need to do now is just have Chris and the attorney come to an agreement. I don't think there's anything else we gotta, no one's questioning anything of what we submitted, so.
Yeah, so this is the first step to move forward trying to develop that whole area.
Right. And the first step, it's $8,500. And I believe it was $96,000 is the proposed overall cost of the sewer line.
It's the whole project.
So of the $96,000, how much of that, that money is the city eating?
Say that again?
How, of the $96,000, how much of that money is the city paying?
Well, the first step is to get the easement in place. And that's what we're asking for here tonight. We gotta get that in place. Then Kurt can work on some hard numbers once we know what that's gonna look like. And then when we go back to these other two developers, then we'll just sit and talk about percentages.
Yeah, what everyone will pay into that. We also have to figure out how much the line they're probably gonna use as well. So when we sit down with them, what their share of that would be.
Right.
Yeah. That was my question.
Yeah. Then when BEI develops from that point forward, that's on them to extend that.
Yeah, so it's their.
And Kurt's building it in a way where that development can use that sewer and everything will be, the capacity will be there.
So I would say the process would be for them to have some contribution upfront. If not, then we would see what we would get in return for the property taxes and the sales tax. And I think worst case then we'd come back with a special service area to tax that area to recoup the dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you, a recapture fee for how many, you know, businesses come onto that line once it's, once it's installed. So phase one is to secure the right of way slash easements, right?
Right.
So, and it's, it's gonna be a public utility easement so that, as well as right of way? So any utilities can get in that right of way as well?
Can we put more utilities in there?
So it, I don't know that it's gonna be a right of way. Right of way is a different term.
Yeah, cause that didn't make.
It's going to be an easement, which based on the covenants you write into the easement, and that's part of, that's part of all the stuff that gets done on this, this step, is that we have to get the boundary of the whole property. We have to get the easement. We have to know where everything is. And we have to write the provisions for the easement and pick the name, obviously. If you're gonna call it a sanitary sewer easement or a utility easement or a public utility easement. So the, you know, the terminology is what we have to make sure we're comfortable with. And the covenant, the provisions that go along with that are going to be specific to that easement. So if it's a sanitary sewer easement, it's gonna have provisions that are gonna be for sanitary sewer only. If it's a utility easement, you could let almost anybody in. And now you gotta be careful with some of those things because now are you gonna be writing things like ComEd and Nycor to be allowed to be in those places? Now, some of these things we have to think about and talk a little further about some of the details because ComEd wants their own easement, Nycor wants their own easement. The telecommunications, they'll, they'll live with some of those things. But the other part is, is the access you're gonna create with this sanitary sewer easement or this public utility easement for the business.
or this public utility easement for the businesses you're gonna have in that area that, okay, how am I gonna get gas over here? Well, you're probably gonna come from the south.
Well, Bill, my, my one thought is a 20-foot easement for an eight-inch main, that's pretty excessive.
So the.
Has to be more, more thought of what's gonna go in there, or if it is a right of way, that's a narrow road over there eventually, making it wider might be.
And it's not a, it's not, it's not, there isn't, there's an existing road right now.
Yeah.
It's just to the north. So there's an access road right there.
But it's, it's a narrow roadway, so you, you traffic through there.
Just, just a correction, that's not a roadway. Half of that is owned by Midland, and the other half is owned by Dearborn.
Yeah, it's like part of their parking lots.
It's an access road.
It's all private property, you go out to.
I gotcha.
To the red light.
Yeah. And there's an access easement that already is coming from 34 that gets down to that property. The Dearborn property is, is broken up. It's, 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 it's one little piece where the Dearborn is, and then the southern part, which has that access easement in the middle to get down to that lower portion. And the easement we're gonna be proposing is, is where the easement ends on the eastern side, that goes all the way over to the BEI side so that sanitary sewer can be brought so they can have that ability to get the sanitary sewer. Storm sewer and water, water mains in the north, storm sewer can be handled internally wherever they need to put it. The san, the sanitary sewer is what's needed.
Yeah, I mean, so phase one's to get the easement, and.
Correct.
Phase two is to then extend the sewer line.
To actually do the, to get the construction of it.
And then Midland then comes on to us, and they pay for that. And then hopefully have a recapture fee for anybody that comes on board.
Correct. And that's the biggest thing we're gonna have to figure out, is with the developers that are gonna be hooking onto this line, figuring out their population equivalents, the PEs, the amount of use they're gonna be putting, and they're gonna be, we're gonna be getting different fees for them tying onto that line, they're paying their fees for tap-on fees, and they're gonna have to pay the recapture fees of the agreement that Cassandra's gonna be putting together with, I'm assuming I'm probably gonna have to help with that.
Yeah.
And figuring out those percentages, and discussing with the investors of, you know, agreeing to, to, to pay for these things. And the hope would be that these investors would pay for most, if not all, of that construction cost for that sewer. They're the ones that are gonna be benefiting. The city is not benefiting besides possibly, you know, getting really.
Census is in Kendall County, do you think there might be some economic stimulus money that could help make that happen to grow that area?
Donald, check tomorrow.
Yeah.
So.
Just thinking.
This, this seems like we have other people.
Can't, can't say no if you don't ask, right?
We've had other people look at the property, this seems to be the roadblock for that opening up for development, so.
Yeah.
I'm thinking it would be nice to have 10 lots out there developed in that shopping center.
Yeah. And Rich, this is, that manhole's in that eight and a half acres that we talked about, and that pipe that feeds back kinda goes across Dearborn but back into there, kinda crosses over, so that was that one issue.
Was all relying buildings, right?
Yeah, but it stays along the property line pretty much, I wouldn't interfere with somebody developing that. It's there, so we don't have to work on getting one. There was somebody that Rich was working with with that eight and a half acres next door, and the sewer's back through there, and we weren't sure where or no.
Okay, so other questions? This is our proposal to council to try to open that corridor up for economic development.
So right now, this cost to us is $8,500, that's what you're asking for?
Yep.
To get this ball rolling?
To get the drawings done, to get the agreements done, to start the process for a much larger project.
Yeah, this is, this is all the, this is all the survey and the plat work that needs to be put together so that they can actually have a document that is agreeable, signable, and recordable.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there any way we can zone that property as to where, we don't just end up with more storage units there? Cuz the current property owner is nothing but a large storage unit building, and I would just hate to see us spend money and move a sanitary line and.
Yeah, we gotta align ourselves with the zoning, but I think that's, we've had some other people come to us for some of those properties and kinda discouraged uses that we didn't think were in the best use for that property for the city. So that's our job to kinda, when we talk to people, to make sure we're getting the best usage for us long-term.
Right, but all I'm saying is they currently own it. So if we move this, and they now have property they can build on where there's no septic system?
No, they're, they're subdividing it, and they're gonna be brokering the lots.
But Adam, just so you know, if we did want to do that, we'd have to, there'd have to be a petition filed for a map amendment to the zoning, and there'd have to be a public hearing.
So I would just hate to see us as a city spend this money, and then $96,000 for a sanitary line goes in, and there's a perfect spot for another 200 storage units after we just spent, you know, $104,000.
I guess that'll determine how good we are with economic development.
And the way they've got it broken up to 10 lots, none of them are big enough to, where a storage unit would, I understand what you're saying, and that, that's, we're gonna, we do a lot behind the scenes to kinda discourage that kind of development. We've got plenty of that. We need something else, though. And I think BEI's gonna help us get it.
Okay, so we come up for a vote, and we'll have to be diligent about how we help develop that area. Okay, item D is our restricted budget items, is there any further discussion on that? Okay. We do have a need to go into executive session pursuant to five, ILCS 122C5, it is the purchase of real estate, or lease of real estate for the use of a public body. Is there a motion to enter a closed session for that purpose?
Could we possibly do audience comments so they could go home and not have to wait for us to come out of this?
It should be quick, but.
Desmond.
We're only going back for that purpose, I'm just gonna tell you about one piece of property that you need to be aware of for the next meeting and why. Okay, is there a motion to enter a closed session?
I'll make it.
Alderman Cranebrink, second by.
I second you.
Quick, please call the roll.
Alder, Alderman and Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Chun?
Aye.
Alderman Danko?
Aye.
Alderwoman Enman?
Aye.
Alderman Ketchum?
Aye.
Alderman Cranebrink?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, we'll quickly go in the back room.
I am so, my gosh, I'm so stiff.
Every other week, every month, I'm pretty.
That's how I do it.
I think so.
I think it's the same.
Yeah.
I'm sending stuff from my daughter sister to draw.
What are we talking about?
Right, right here, the alley, the first two after the.
Oh, wait.
By the front of the antique place, there's a pole right there with three transformers.
On, on.
So.
This, this side of the road or that side?
So you got the two, we got three.
The end's early and then there's.
All the first two specs.
Then there's a driveway to go into.
South of the alley.
West of the street.
And I think out there, he said, you okay with what he's talking about?
There's an intake pipe, intake storm drain, if you're coming down the street from that church street.
What are they gonna do?
And it's like over here, and the pipes are, I mean, it's gonna, redesigning it.
Yeah, I think it's a plan, I think it's a plan.
Yeah, I don't know how detailed it is. We're part of a bunch of other states.
Whatever, whatever we got, I'll take a look at it.
I did, we just didn't want trenching across where we were. Where the mayor wanted it. He wanted it to park lots, so that's a turn from that transformer right here. It's a great spot, but I don't want trenching, stay turn of the street.
Well, so what you do with it? It can go back, right? You have to do, you know, you get stone, and then you gotta be full of fill.
And then there's a full side right there on church. It might be more, it might be easier to observe from church than where we're gonna have it. So if you don't come downtown, you don't see it coming down church. It's 10,000 yards, I suppose.
And if you can see it, I can see it from church on 34. That'll probably be.
Is it gonna be on the sidewalk? You know, it's pretty white, so it's gonna be on the sidewalk.
It's not, it's not, it's gonna be on the sidewalk, though. Is there gonna be a nut? Run to the, go by LBN, you got, you get to be blocked or whatever.
Good.
Pretty general going out on that.
Let's get through this base.
Well.
Council hasn't spoken on this one. Well, I mean, if they're within the zone, then they're fine. I mean, we, we've heard some people that Dearborn, oh, no, that don't fit. I mean, if it's zoned, it's zoned, they meet the zoning, there's nothing to bring.
True.
We lived long the hard one Thursday afternoon here.
Yeah, they're not that big.
It's not, it's not what he's going for.
He's got his. Why would you put something like that at that visibility? You get somebody that'd pay twice as much, put something visible.
I didn't want to say it here, because you gotta be, you gotta be careful when you're talking about purchasing Dearborn's property, you gotta, you put that on the wing. But if you look at that, you might think they're gonna lose dollar generally. You know, on the end of the, there are, that too far, there, you lost something else over there. He might make the rest of that storage.
Oh, the one.
Is there, you know, existing part of the building? Yeah. He might as well, he might as well let him, because no one's gonna go in it.
Well, it's all stored in the back, and put any stuff up in private.
But he, he called me a couple months ago. Actually, the Seer Store in Peru's running open this year. Who matters, gonna buy it out of bankruptcy or something? It's part of the mall, but Seer's all good, it's all part, man. Who do you know, so I told him, here's the guy I'm gonna talk to. Honestly, just the thing, you know, the city part, I'm sure, after this. He usually has to get a piece of the action. Okay, he's gonna normally get a piece of it. And, you know, he said, he's gonna, he's gonna pitch it to you about rivers, and I mean, Peru gets more sales tax. They probably, they've built this two years ago. So, we're doing, so the outline around you. So, yeah, you're gonna put some roots out there, which we don't have. You're going back, you know? And you're right, the guys are total ass. I said, I wanted to give you a heads up, and I said, but here's the bottom line, how do you work around it? The guy said, first of all, no one ever asks, and no one finds him interesting enough to track.
Well, and something you lose with this, is that in your easing provisions, you put in there that it is only allowed to have approved connections on there by city councils. So now, how are you gonna, how are you gonna put a storage unit on there if the city council has to vote? How do you tie into that sanitary sewer? Huh? How's that?
I mean, they're gonna give you some $130,000 back, which is over.
I know, ever, but.
I totally forgot that with the easement provisions, we could write that the, that the connections could only be by approved entities by the city council. So what we wanna do? So it could, it will be what they vote on. I could talk to Cassandra about how you write that in there, but I'm pretty sure you can put some language in there. We can figure that out. Right now, we have $8,500.
All right, we had a motion by Alderman Chun, second by Alderman Ketchum to return to open session, whether Kurt feels called to roll?
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Chun?
Aye.
Alderman Danko?
Aye.
Alderwoman Erickson?
Aye.
Alderwoman Enman?
Aye.
Alderman Ketchum?
Aye.
Alderman Cranebrink?
Aye.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, we have no announcements, we'll move on to item 15, public comment. First up is Colton Otto. All right, go ahead.
So I'm gonna make this quick on a couple of them. A gentleman in the back asked me to ask this real quick on whenever it came to liquor licenses, are you allowing two, are you allowing one? You know, just clarification on what you guys actually said or wanted to do on that one, just for him. Outside of that one, I had a speech going on here about the Under the Big Top Foundation and organization. Obviously, most of the people already know the lady and the legacy that we're talking about here. I do believe that it's already been said here that it would be a disgrace to the family not to allow them to do it. I can help them file the paperwork, I have no problems doing so. Also, I'm very fluent in being able to do website designs, which are already in the works. Articles of incorporation and bylaws, you can literally do very preliminary ones, and that's why you work with the board and organize the board to be able to do that, and update your bylaws as you go. Obviously, everybody up here already knows how that kinda operates, whenever it comes to it. So one thing I do wanna get into, what is the city wanting in liability insurance? Can you give me a number? You want a million? You want two million? You want five? Do you want that, the occurrence or the aggregate? How do you want your liability and coverage to be? What specific ones are you looking at? I can give you my email, sir, that you can directly contact me if you'd like to let me know what the city is specifically looking for. I am fully prepared, and also, as it is for myself, I'm fully prepared to back this family and anybody else that would like to join me. I brought my checkbook tonight to write to the family specifically to start off with $250 to make sure this happens. So I don't know if you'd like to join me, sir, in matching that dollar for dollar, so that way we can help them get this operation going, if you'd would, or anybody else would like to join me in this. We can go ahead and donate to the family, and that'll get the upfront operations. Now, if we're wondering whether or not the $8,000 for the tent, like you said, just run, over the past three months, I've raised $7,200 for the women's wrestling program, $8,000 is not gonna be a problem. And if I gotta split it with the city or however we're gonna do that, $4,000, that's gonna be a kickback, I can do that in two runs. So if there's any other questions the city has of how I can actually get this done for you, please email me, I'll give you a direct answer, and we'll get it done. So leave it in the family's hands to run this operation and keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Chris DeTetter.
When is the next session?
For co, for public comment?
Yeah, for all this.
At the beginning of the next meeting.
When's the next meeting?
Right after this.
No, no, I'm talking about like next week, two weeks. Okay, so if we have everything done in two weeks, we can bring it back and we can get this done. Right, we can get it, well, we can do the whole Under the Big Top thing.
Is your microphone on?
If we, if we have all of the, the writers and everything else that we need in the foundation, we can have the council vote to have this done, the, the tent and everything.
I don't know my comment, but if it's in order, then I think that's something they could consider.
Okay, okay. Okay, we'll work on it.
Okay, thank you. Becky Nelson?
Mr. Mayor and the council, I just wanna bring up a few things. As I was listening to some of these wonderful programs that were brought to our attention tonight, i.e. the ComEd water meter program, i.e. the ComEd EV charging stations, I'm seeing a ComEd denominator here, I'm seeing where individuals are pitching you these programs and saying that they're not gonna cost that much or they're free, but yet there's no substance to it. Because I just did some research in the course of the last three hours of sitting through this meeting, where it seems as though the city wants to become a property development company, as well as an event planning coordination company, as well as a utility sidekick company. I'm just dumbfounded that the individuals on the council. I'm just dumbfounded that the individuals on the council are okay with just saying "I" to things that need more reference and research. The, the situation out at Indian Springs, that company, you know, if they wanna develop Indian Springs, why don't you say, hey, why don't you do the eighty-five hundred dollars in research and bring it to us? And then we'll take a gander at it, and we'll see if we need to get involved legally and write us fee simple and buy property and then develop it, and then, who knows? You know, they could go bust tomorrow, but yet the city is putting all this money out there for something that's a what-if, right? ComEd water meter program, let me just lay it down for you, twenty-six seventy-two households in Sandwich, Illinois, okay, that's what I got on my research. Meters, they're approximately two fifty to five hundred per household out the door, you gotta pay for that. That's one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the meters. The installation labor, fifty dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars per home, dependent upon the age and the infrastructure. Let's look at about four hundred and five grand there. Then you have your data receivers, five thousand to twenty thousand dollars, dependant upon your home and your, um, the way your systems are set up at City Hall. Let's go with twenty K, worst-case scenario. Software integration, five thousand to a hundred grand, let's go with a hundred grand, I'm a worst-scenario kinda girl when it comes to my checkbook. One million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do business with ComEd. Yeah, buddy! Don't we do enough with them? Can't we figure out something that doesn't cost every single homeowner more money? I have come up here before and said, you take money from this pocket, you take money from that pocket. What the heck? ComEd E V is not free. Most of those expenses have to be paid upfront with a grant for an R three zone, you are number sixteen eighteen, please Google it, please look it up. It's under the Equity Investment Community map. The Equity Investment Community map, you know what that means? That's all about the green energy democratic train that wants to throw money at something that should be the problem and the responsibility of the person who buys the car. What I said in my first public comment was I spent forty-seven dollars and some odd cents on gas today in my unleaded F one fifty, which has paid off, and I make nobody's responsibility but mine. Is the city ready to start paying for gas stations and giving us rebates on our gas? Cause I don't know when we decided to become a utility company, an event planning coordination organization, or lack thereof. And now, we're looking at developments, and, and we're gonna throw out money for a couple sketches and whatnot. When a company that want, if they have any taste in doing business in Sandwich, you think they'd come to the table and pay for that eighty-five hundred bucks? Let's get it together. Fiduciary obligation, that's what I voted for. We have a treasurer here who can't even get the books. She was elected, the people want her. Fiduciary obligation, police department administrator can't get together and get an ordinance that matches what the federal government says for meal replay, uh, reimbursements. Fiduciary obligation, that's where it is, and that goes back to your administrator, because you know what? Under the chat G P T, when you look up an administrator, they're supposed to be the orchestra, the orchestra person, the person that literally keeps everybody in hymnal, in, in unison. And you guys are all back and forth, back and forth for three hours on stuff that you don't even have the details on. Please, do your research. Right now, in this day and age, the technology's at your fingertips, I did it in three hours.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Oh, we have one more, sorry.
I take it back.
Mister Jeff, is it Ernst? All right, come on up, please.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, thank you very much for letting me have a few short minutes here. I gotta, kudos to the water department on half of it. I've been here four years, and paying every three months was new to me, I got along with it, it worked. The next thing you know, I'm at two hundred and eighty to four hundred dollars a month. Then it went to seven hundred a month, or for three months. I called the water department, I came in, they gave me two of these little things to put on my toilet to see if your toilet is leaking, didn't leak a bit. A gentleman came to the door one day and he knocked on it, and he said he's from the water department, fantastic guy. He came in, he said, you gotta leak somewhere. Nine hundred and seventy dollars for three months for water. And I don't have a leaded line, it's all, it, it was all copper going out to the street. He came down in the basement, and we walked that basement, he said, well, you got a water softener. The water softener shut off, I turned that off when I got there. He said, well, let's check this, let's check that, and I said, I had a hose going to the drain, and the water was dripping quite often. Anyway, he pointed out a small little check valve that went to the dehumidifier, and it was stuck open, and it was running like a cow pissing on you-know-what. He fixed it, we got done taking care of it, he left, boom. Nine hundred and eighty dollars went down to three hundred and sixty, then it went down to two hundred and thirty. Kudos to the water department, the guy did a fantastic job. The only problem I got, I live on Third Street, I've been here four and a half years. It's as bad as Latham used to be with the bumps. You can't drive down that road, or you can't drive down Fourth Street without rattling your damn back eye teeth. If my wife has got, had terrible, terrible surgery in her back, she can't ride in a car down there. Is there any plans to keep going with the streets on Third Street? I know you got Main Street going now, what are the projections for the streets in town? Is there anything?
Are you finished, sir? I'll answer your question, are you done?
Well, I got one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
The other thing is, I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house. The lady next door to me doesn't, but from there on, it's spotty. You got four chunks, then you got grass, you cross the street, terrible sidewalks, across the other, across the sidewalk, you're talking this much room. You can't ride a bike, you can't pull a wagon, you can't push a stroller, and that's for two and a half blocks. Are there, are those gonna get replaced or fixed? It, it, it's totally out of control, the sidewalks are terrible, I know you've replaced some of them on the other part of town. Is there any process, is there anything gonna be happening with the sidewalks there? That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, we do have plans for East Pleasant next, and then West Center Street. Those are the next two projects that are funded.
How far down the road do you anticipate that?
Uh, this year's Main, next year's East Pleasant, the following year is West Center.
Okay, how about sidewalks?
Uh, they're discussing that now with some other programs. Each, uh, each council member can put in for their sidewalk program, and there's limited funds, it's kept at about a hundred and sixty thousand a year.
How long do you anticipate Latham to stay the way it is?
Thirty, fifty years.
How many years is that gonna hold up, are you anticipating?
Unless you live forever, it's gonna live you.
Okay, so, Third Street, I'll be here seven years by the time you are gonna go ahead and fix it.
You got more answers out of me than I give most people, sir.
Well, I don't know if they're all right, but we're gonna work with them, thank you.
Well, if you ask me how good of a mayor I am, good enough. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? All right, Alderman Robinson, Alderman Chun, hold on, they were seeing if I might say an aye.
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 Those opposed? Give me the hose adjourned, we'll take a quick recess and come back for the regular meeting.
Hey, Mayor Latham, you want that email now, or do you want me to just have Jeff? What's that? Okay, and in the, on the website? Sorry, I can't hear all that one.
All right, council, will you please take your seats? All right, I call the order of the City of San Antonio Regent Council meeting of Monday, July seventh, at the time of nine fifty-two P M. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Arnett.
Here.
Alderman, or, Alderwoman Erickson.
Here.
Wait, I have the old one. I'm sorry, just a minute. There we go, I got it, thank you. Okay, starting again. Alderman Arnett.
Here.
Alderman Chun.
Here.
Alderman Danko.
Here.
Alderwoman Erickson.
Here again.
Alderwoman Inman.
Here.
Alderman Ketchum.
Here.
Alderman Crimbrink.
Here.
Alderman Robinson. Thank you.
Okay, we have a quorum present, audience comments. Jim, I believe you wanted to make a comment, or? You gotta turn the mic up.
All right, I'm the owner of Lily's, uh, Shurbat LLC. Getting ready to retire, I'm selling. And I have a gentleman that has a liquor license in town that was willing to buy it, and to do that, he needs to have a separate liquor license, not affiliated with his business, but a whole separate business. And we're all having a, an interpretation problem with what's written in the code. And I don't have it in front of me, but it states that one can't have two liquor licenses, but it's under the locations, and it's just not written very clearly. And I was just wondering if you guys would have a problem with issuing, the mayor issuing two separate licenses to the same individual, under two separate corporations. So, that's, that's my question. I mean, if, if you had a Casey's on one side of town and a Casey's on the other, you would issue with that company two separate liquor licenses, I'm pretty sure. That's being used as an example. And then if you had a gentleman that had two successful restaurants in town, you would have two separate liquor licenses. Just, maybe get the, the code reading like it should. So, that's on fifty-two B, I think. And I'm going from memory, don't worry. All right, so, appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? All right, thank you, Jim. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Motion to adopt the consent agenda as a whole, all matters are considered routine by the council and acted by one motion. If discussed, desire that item can be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, there is follows item A, that is a special committee of the whole budget meeting of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The approved amendments of the committee whole of meeting of June sixteenth. The approval of minutes of the committee of whole of meeting of June 16th, 2025, the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 16th, 2025. And the May financial report are being removed. Okay, is there a motion to approve, first of all, is anyone want to remove the minutes that are on there, that'll be A, B, and C? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Alderman Crainbrink, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Chan. I do have one change, Denise, I'm sorry, I caught it late, but on the regular city council meeting. Under E says the vote was six, two, or six zero, it should be six two, just a minor correction. Right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. I will skip any other comments for tonight and move on to our attorney report.
Nothing additional.
Clerk report.
I just want to make everyone aware that April 14th minutes were with the assistance of AI. I loved it. Just sharing, thank you.
Treasurer report, Sandra Kohler. City administrator report, Jeff Pemmen.
Just, I'll be out of the office Thursday and Friday this week.
City reports, Chief Senni.
Nothing further.
Engineer Kurt Detman.
Nothing further, thank you, sir.
Council reports, Alderman Arnett.
The only thing I want to talk about is, what Jim had to talk about was the dual liquor licenses for dual businesses.
Yes.
If it's not very clear in our codes and ordinances, maybe we bring it back up and we get things clarified.
Yes.
Because, I mean, I personally don't have, if one guy wants to own a business here and a business here, and there's two separate liquor licenses, I don't see any reason they shouldn't be able. And if our code isn't written clear enough, maybe we need to clarify it.
Agreed.
Okay, so let's have all of you read the code. Email me separately your interpretation. If we have consensus, that's what we'll go off of, if we don't, we'll amend the code and bring it up for vote.
Can I just ask real quick? Is there anyone that is against one person holding two liquor licenses?
It'd be for two separate businesses, and I gave you the examples earlier. Bigger towns, Yorkville's got, what, two, three Walgreens, something like that, or maybe it's Oswego.
They have at least two, they have one seventy-one.
They all have it, same thing, give the example of Casey's. It would be no different, you know? With that, so that's the way I'm looking at it, I mean, as long as they're doing, you know, they're able to hold the one liquor license, so they've made all the hoops jumped and everything, you would think that it would be okay. I don't know if we could just do a text amendment or something to it, because really, it's under the section of location. I think if we just changed the wording on the sentence.
Yeah, that's, I guess, we just need confirmation that that's what you guys want to do.
Yeah, because there's some of your feedback, because then we'll clean it up in case someone reads it differently. And so I think that's a good idea, individually send that to me. Okay, we'll review the text and then we'll bring it on the next meeting, you can decide what action you want to take. Adam, what else? Is that I got? Okay. Alderman Chan.
I have nothing.
Alderman Danko.
I'm good.
Alderwoman Erickson.
Um, nothing further, thank you.
Alderwoman Inman.
Nothing further, thank you.
Alderman Ketchum.
Nothing at the moment.
Alderman Crainbrink.
The only thing I wanted to say is, you know, Tony Everly's wife passed away, you know, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers and everything. And then I just heard that Jackie Green passed away, so keep their, her family and your thoughts and prayers as well, so. Legacy left on Ju-, on Fourth of July, so.
Yeah, we didn't say anything about Tony because we were waiting for arrangements, but we did hear that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Fred?
Nope, that's all I had, thank you.
Alderman Robinson?
Uh, the only thing I have is if, two weeks from now, was it the 21st or whatever? If on the committee of the whole, we could get, um, have listed the, and it can be under me, or new business, but. Updating our personnel ordinance for the per diem. Apparently, there's been talk about it, but we haven't discussed it council-wide. So, there's newer standards that we could go by, which would make life a little bit simpler.
I'll provide that to all of you, it's a department of labor.
And I would like it where we discuss it and there's a dollar amount, if we could then put it on the next meeting to vote. Obviously, we would have to just change those numbers in the personnel ordinance. But however, it's easy to do it. Let me know.
Okay, anything else, Rich?
Uh, no, that's it, thank you.
Okay, other old business, we had a request to change some of the texts in the historic preservation. I'll have our attorney just address those changes and then we'll come back next month for a vote.
Okay, so I don't, I think this was in your packet. And I don't know if the redlined one got. Shared or not, so I just wanted to call out the changes. In the applications for landmarks and historic districts nominations. I changed it to documentation that the property owner has consented, not been notified of the application. So either they are joining in the application, or at least have, or they are the ones applying, or they have consented to someone else applying. And then. The. If the commission does decide to make something historic district or designation, that then the owners of record have thirty days to notify the city that they withdraw the consent that was previously given. And then. The application is essentially withdrawn, and then. I think that's really it, and I think that covers what you guys want, you want the property owner to be either the applicant, or at least to, you know, they, it can't be done without their permission. And then you wanted the provision for them to be able to opt out. And so because we changed it to that they had to consent, I just put in a timeframe that they would have to opt out, so they can't. You know, have the city, I think one of the things we had discussed maybe was the, like, if the, a plaque, or if the city spent money, but I think the easiest. Way would just be to set a deadline for the property owner to withdraw the application.
So I think it addresses your two issues, the only thing is, is that we left it, so if the city went ahead and spent money, say for example, the petition got a plaque. The plaque costs a thousand dollars, then they want it out, they couldn't at that point because the city already spent money. But it gives them like two other opportunities to not participate before we get to that point.
Right, my only problem is, I look at Elmwood Place, it's one street they want to do right away. So we have somebody that used to be on council, and she's in Michigan for three months every summer. Her husband is an over-the-road truck driver. He can possibly be home at Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, he's gone again on Sunday. So he's only home possibly six days a month. So, his wife is in Michigan, and he's on the road all but six days a month. I don't see him in Michigan, Cincinnati, wherever he drives his truck, being able to. Get paperwork together and send it to the city for that thirty days, what I was looking for is at any point, an opt-out.
I mean, in writing can be an email, it doesn't have to be, like, the definition of writing is an email, so it doesn't have, and again, this, the property owner has to agree to the initial application, so it can't even get. To a hearing before the commission without the property owner having agreed, so. That is kind of the two opportunities that they have to opt out. If they never give their consent, obviously, it doesn't go anywhere, and then if they decide, again, so there'd have to be all the notices sent by. I don't know if necessarily Denise does it, but, so all the notices have to be sent for the public hearing, it'd have to be published, everyone has to come here, we have to pay our, you know, commission to. Debate it, have the hearing, make a recommendation, and so then, after that, then they still have thirty days to get out of it, and so. And it, I get what you're saying, but it doesn't have to be like paper handed to someone, they can just email and say. And I guess if they didn't know that, and they were that concerned, I guess they, I would hope they would speak with an attorney, but. I guess if you want to make it a longer timeframe, you can, but.
Ninety days.
I guess the concern is then. You'd probably. Want to put something that no action will be taken until after the passage of that ninety days, because again, if you really think about it, how much money has already been expended just to get to the hearing?
Right, the thing is though, I wouldn't think the city would spend a penny until after, to begin with.
Which, that's why I'm saying they have to consent to it.
So, are, what you're saying is, somebody can be nominated, and there's no actual timeframe for them to say yes or no, so if you never hear from them, then there's nothing going forward.
So, in the application, the application requires a document that the owner consents to the application.
So if they never consent and never respond, so if you never get a response, then there's no moving forward ever? There's not a deadline to say, I need a response from that initial.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, we won't even consider the application unless there's a document in there that says that the owner consents. The application will be incomplete and not sent forth if it doesn't have that document in there. So I filed it, but yeah, so that's under one D.
Well, under thirty-eight dash two, number one, any person, group or persons association. That's no, that, that's like wide open.
Right, but that's why.
I'm a visitor, I drive through town, oh, I like that house, I'm going to nominate it.
Right, that's why I put that the application requires, so this thirty-eight dash two eight.
So that whole line could be struck.
No, I mean, because what if. I, you know, I have a society where I want to be able to apply on your behalf, and you're fine with it, as long as you don't have to do it. You're gonna put in writing that you consent to me. Making the application, and then the application is going to be provided, so anyone can do it. Feel like we're really overthinking this.
They could have a disability down, or they couldn't, they may be blind, they may not be able to write. Okay. Okay, we tried to fix what was in there, it'll just come back for a vote, and we'll see where it goes. All right, new business, semi-monthly bills, is that the correct amount, Alderwoman Erickson, two hundred nine thousand four hundred seventy-seven and ninety-nine cents?
No.
Okay, what is the new amount?
Two hundred nine thousand four hundred twenty and eighty-five cents.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the monthly bills totaling two hundred nine thousand four hundred twenty dollars and eighty-five cents?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Alderwoman Inman, second by Alderwoman Erickson, is there any discussion on the monthly bills? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Chan.
Aye.
Alderman Danko.
Aye.
Alderwoman Erickson.
Aye.
Uh, Alderwoman Inman.
Aye.
Alderman Ketchum. Alderman Crainbrink.
Aye.
Alderman Robinson.
Aye.
And Alderman Arnett.
Aye. Okay, item B is approval of the mayor appointment of Alderman Chan and Alderman Ketchum to the city's budget committee for twenty-five, twenty-six, is there a motion to approve that recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Alderwoman Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alderwoman Inman, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. C is the authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement at the EEI for a lump sum fee of eight thousand five hundred dollars to prepare the necessary paperwork. And establish a grant of easement for Dearborn property. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Crainbrink, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Robinson, is there any discussion? Clerk please call the roll.
Alderman Ketchum.
Aye.
Alderman Crainbrink.
Aye.
Alderman Robinson.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Chan.
Aye.
Alderman Danko.
No.
Alderwoman Erickson.
No.
Alderman Inman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D is discussion and possible approval of ordinance twenty-five, ten, entitled on ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a dedication of public right-of-way for the public road purposes for Big Bear Farm. From Big Bear Farms to the City of San Luis for zero point eight four zero acres on Pratt Road, and a temporary construction easement agreement with Big Bear Farms, Inc. To access said property. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five, ten?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Alderman Crainbrink, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Ketchum, any discussion on the agreement? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Robinson.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Chan.
Aye.
Alderman Danko.
Aye.
Alder, or Alderwoman Erickson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Inman.
Aye.
Alderman Ketchum.
Aye.
Alderman Crainbrink.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We have a need to go to closed session pursuant to five ILCS one twenty-two C one. As regards the personality appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony in a complaint lodged against an employee. Of the public body, or against a legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Also, five ILCS one twenty-two C five, it is for the purchase or lease of real property for the use of a public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether particular parcels should be acquired. Also, five ILCS two C six, setting the sale price or lease of property owned by the public body. And lastly, item five ILCS one twenty-two C eleven, pending litigation, litigation when an action, when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular body has been filed or is pending before a court. Or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is prominent, probably, I think it's supposed to be prominent, probable or imminent. Is there a motion to enter closed session for those four items? Make that motion. Okay, Alderman Chan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Inman, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Chan.
Aye.
Alderman Danko.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Inman.
Aye.
Alderman Ketchum.
Aye.
Alderman Crainbrink.
Aye, sorry, it came out, but it didn't come out, I don't know if it makes any sense, I heard it, nobody else did.
All right, is that it? Okay, into the closed session, Chief Senni will join us for the first portion.
Everything's still attached. Everything's still attached.
But I'm hearing, there's something, uh, there is like this week. And we're gonna work, we're gonna sell, we're just gonna talk about business. Like, he was, uh, he was, uh, he was still, uh, he was, uh, kind of used ourselves all day. So, we had about four hours. Mostly involved with, it's a free thing. And our kids. Um, everything. Try, try one, who, by heart, is, is, has, uh, you know, you're, they have something that we are talking about. And, uh, that about this, he didn't know each other, why would he feel the way he did? How good that he provided it? It's like, when I saw him, I thought, well, he had a good hand, but he had a lot. He turns back, also, really. Didn't even have to. Helped him tend, or something, he was like, they're trying to start his English. You know, and we haven't had a really, we didn't think they had. But, we didn't have. See, we think, we think we all gave him so much. Everybody liked, and he did tell me, tell me, it is time for the donors to talk about. Other, I got a broker, a little bit related, because of family and all, you know, so. When you have to stop stuff.
I need you. Oh, I think I actually bring a water.
You still the niece's. Well, you did say that you did. Hey, do you have a copy? I know that Parson gave you all that I lost, it, uh, calls, bro, that the actual, the one that should, we should be doing later. Stay cold or whatever, like, what, uh, I make sauce. I drove five hours today to come to this game here. So, I enjoyed it. It's like each one goes up almost five dollars, doesn't it? Uh, you know, I'm gonna tell you this, I don't have a vote.
But we've gotta pay a thousand dollars.
No, I know, I was against that. Well, what I was, yeah, but we're not all alive, okay?
What else about that?
I agree. But I can't cut that, cause every time, I knew we shouldn't. To me, it would be financially, physically irresponsible for us to do the big votes. But it happens. But my idea to that was, why don't you just give? Cause I didn't know how to cut it. I said, why don't we just give them fifty dollars for each day they're gonna be gone? Before they leave, you're sure. And that was very. Well, that's what I'm saying, is if we just, if you're gonna be gone five days. But they should. But they should, so listen to my three seconds. If we wrote you a check or gave you cash, after, before you leave, and you trip, well, check is better than that. So you gotta have proof. But if we get, like, the guys are gonna be gone for four days. You give them two hundred dollars for order, leave, that paid for their, it's like, I didn't know what it was, I said fifty dollars. If they wanna go eat at Double, they want that, hell, they use double. And not only that, we go to convention, sometimes they eat lunch there. So they want a little bit bigger dinner and a bigger breakfast, cause they're like, I like chicken. What is the problem with that? I don't wanna go on their seats. You can't read half of it. Okay, so now we're like sixty-eight. What's this incidental?
So that's just the, that's just the. This is just, uh, so the ones that really, like, pay. And this is first class, they're traveling. And this is.
That's a breakfast. So if we could get, have a focus on these three bands. Now, that about. Fifteen thirty, uh, quarter, fifty-five, sixty-three.
Which is actually, you know, the, the, the conference is good.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah. Could isn't it so that, um, they can come back and say, well, but it was, just like, yes. Gas went up to seventy-one thousand, they were only paying six cents a, uh, you know, the Irish, uh. And it went up, it automatically went up. We're gonna run. Okay, have questions. Main Street is supposed to be, uh, to South London. Every house on Main Street is supposed to have access to their home on Main Street, and their driveway, right? Well, my neighbors, right by Main and Bull Rock, were told that I, by the guys that were, got the roof of my house, that they had a part over on Bull Rock. Cause they think our, Main Street forces to go right. That was the way we, I mean, while we were adding, well. They put cones out. So we can't get in their driveway. I said, go move the cones apart from here. You pay taxes, you know? I mean, they were working today, which they were, but they weren't working quite my house. But they did like, uh, sorry. They did like, this, around their house, they were all working down here. This is Bull Rock Street, this is their house. Their driveway is right here, they got cones, like, completely. And they told us you had a part over here, which in my opinion isn't very good, so it's very in straight. So those can get hurt, you know? No, it's not, I live there, I know. So, and it's good, you guys, if, no, I know, I, I talked about my house, oh, yeah. I'm a little bit over, and I, I have a, uh, still. Oh my god, now that I talk about, they, they looked at my shit, and I just tried to cut back, idiot in the driveway.
Yeah, I would have liked. I, I told nothing about that.
Yeah, they were there working and, and, and blocking their driveway, but of course. By the part of the mall, she, I know where she dates my nephew. I'm like, just come party, uh, now you only gotta walk the block, and it's getting nervous about walking, and I'm coming down, I want to get over. You know, cause that's a long way, those are, bringing up, moving up, shooting. No driveway, you, you would, promise you had this on your, well, there's three of them. I never got it. I don't know, you would, no, it's. So, yeah. Does this money even add up? Politics, I hate it. No, I'm a treasurer, I, I, um, I get votes. I can, I can lead, but I can't, uh. Get them some, some, I have not been. Four hours ago, I was, like, I'm a great. Today is adorable. I'm telling you, I told them we were gonna get popcorn, popcorn M and N's, and mix it all together and have a hot one. You didn't have a ton of popcorn.
No, no.
You set off the record. I mean, I don't care because I'm not a law. That's how I be.
I, if you're just looking for both sides of the issue here, you're obviously, you're legit, you're right, it's all not being, you're right, it's, and you should, you're legally.
Well, not getting the proper.
You got, you got, you got, what we need to do, for job, or ensuring what, what your role is, what the city, what you're responsible for. And making sure that you kind of, uh, like, you're.
And then they put.
Yeah, you have to have tools in the act, to, to, to do what you need to, 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 whoever, whoever.
Right, if you need an notebook, you can.
Yeah, you can, yeah, yeah, yes. I dropped out. So I.
His ass. I see where. No, but, I mean, that's all, Henry does. He does get me. He gave us so many. Still never get to catch up.
What? I couldn't hear a word you said, because I'm right in between.
I just wanted to talk about the, I just wanted to talk about the new office. Just kinda get a staffing update.
How, and he looks older than the last.
He's thirty.
Yeah. Has he had a police officer?
It's, it's a lot, it's a lot.
Uh, I don't know all that.
So, my son's answer, right?
S E A, yes.
S E A. So we swore in a new, I don't transfer officer tonight, how'd that all go? Uh, so we get a little more information about Officer Hanson's. And then I know you said during the, uh, meeting during the swearing, and then he, he's gonna go through his field training, and then you anticipate him being on his own, right, and you said, October?
Yeah, she either made, like, a number of, or, 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 uh, uh, uh.
And where does that put the, uh, the permanent intern staff?
So. Can be hired. We're still short of one officer.
And you're still, are you, you're still having the lateral application process open as well?
Yeah, so our lateral application process, uh, definitely, we have all, all, still, we have six officers, our initial, our, uh, still, still, interesting, or, awesome.
Oh my god.
So there's a pretty good opportunity that we might get another new officer by the end of year?
Ideally, yes.
You can still hear us on YouTube. Will you go check that?
I, I know I turned mine off. Obviously, I have a club. I don't know how Denise runs this thing, so.
I just got a text saying that we can still hear you on YouTube. I didn't turn it off.
Oh, somebody, somebody's got their mic on.
God, if that comes back to bite me in the ass, huh? There's another one. No, I still said. Yeah, Kevin is talking to the reporter about to be fired. I checked, I just, I just turned off the lights. Well, that three nights, I don't know if it's something, uh, since they check.
Or this.
Either or.
How many issues do you want to do that?
People know it, yeah, you know, you've been a pause.
I don't know about necessarily.
Yeah, I didn't know at all until, hey, we can still hear you on YouTube, uh. Well, at least I didn't say anything bad. The last thing was the interview we were going to do together. And they, you know. Exactly.
That's just proper.
That's what I'm.
It's gonna be very long.
Now, are we gonna meet last time?
Didn't we already?
Oh, yeah, we did already, I didn't realize that. Uh, I'm trying to, I'm.
Lots of words.
Yeah, I have, uh, uh, that I'm, I'm not.
Uh. I, I've done that a lot, but I never.
So when?
I don't know.
Should I go, like, ask him if they can hear me? Hello?
Well.
Okay, good, so they can't hear. Can't get him to, can't get him to turn him on to talk during the meeting always, so people can hear him, but we'll leave him on. Can you, I guess you guys probably can't.
Well, as long as you didn't hear me say anything inappropriate, not good. You know what, and nothing has that few, it's, I didn't say. Can you still hear me, would you just please tell me yes or no? I hear that. Yep. The mayor's is still on.
Make sure you turn your fans off. Now you can hear back here, because that fan's off, that fan is off. All right, don't pack up yet on the west side of town over here. This side's all ready. All right, motion by Alderman Enman, second by Alderwoman Erickson to return to open session with a clerk piece call the roll.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Chun.
Aye.
Alderman Danko.
Aye.
Alderwoman Erickson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Enman.
Aye.
Alderman Ketchum.
Aye.
Alderman Crimbrink.
Aye.
Alderman Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, there's no action to be taken, so the announcements are the next finance meeting is July twenty first, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. Committee of the whole at seven P M followed by the regular meeting on July twenty first at twenty twenty five. Chief, will you see me after the meeting? Is there a, uh, any other business come before council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Robinson, is there a second? Done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, adjourned.
Thanks for a great time, Fred.
Yeah, it's always fun.